Thank you all, thank you for reading. We will bring this meeting to order. We have a very, very full agenda, a detailed agenda of a lot of different discussions, of different topics tonight, so I am going to exercise my prerogative as a chair to move things along when I think they need to move along. We begin with community comments. If there are any, is there anyone here from the public who would like to comment on something that is not otherwise on the agenda? We'd love to hear your comments during the meeting as agenda topics come up as well. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move on to student report. Ms. Annika Haynes?
All right. So recently, November 18th through 22nd, we had the Spirit Week, which was sponsored by Student Council. And this year, we by far have the most successful Spirit Week in the history of our school. And we raised over $3,600 throughout the week. And that completely beat last year's record, which was $2,500, so that was amazing. And on Friday alone, the senior class was able to raise $1,100, and that granted them the victory. So we ended up switching the charity from the One Fund, which I initially mentioned was the Boston Strong Charity. And we ended up switching that to the Philippines type sooner or later, because we felt it was a more urgent need, and many people in our school agreed, so we changed it. And then, that's wrapping up Spirit Week. We also are, tomorrow, we're decorating ornaments to put on a tree, which represents about 40 or so children who are part of the Little Home for Wanderers, where we donate gifts and people in our students can pick a child in need and donate a gift for the holiday season. And also, looking ahead, we have the freshman and sophomore town meetings. And this is really a great place for the students to voice their concerns and suggestions to improve our school. That's all.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Excellent. Thanks very much. And I don't see Rachel here this evening, so we will move along without her.
They're in play rehearsal, right?
Yeah, she's dressed.
Tech week.
Ah, yeah.
Tech week.
Excellent. All right. And Brad, I think we're getting a bit of a strange echo up here.
I thought it was in my head.
Yeah, I thought it was your back. Is that better? Thank you, sir.
Ooh, that's better.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we're going to move to our, to the final's report with Mr. Egger and Mr. Haynes. And it's good to see you back again. How many years in a row has it been? Because it's been for as long as I've been here.
Thank you. Yes, it has been a pretty good run, I would say. Six or seven?
Very good. The floor is yours.
For those of you who don't know me, my name's Jim Egger. I'm a foregrowing, been in the community just about 10 years. And we've had Dan Haynes as our auditor for, as he said, the last six or seven years. He's the partner on the job with Scanlon and Company. And he completed his audit. And before you have a draft of the financial statements, which he will briefly discuss and go over, the only thing I'll just preface is that the financial statements that were issued of the draft is, the opinion is unqualified and there were no findings or question costs during the course of the audit. And I'll let Dan speak to the salient points of the audit.
Thank you. As Jim mentioned, I think everybody had an electronic copy, into 49-page document, which I will go over briefly, being mindful of your long agenda this evening. The basic financial statements, pages three and four, this is the opinion. The opinion looks a little different this year. What they decided to do is put some headings on the opinion, which, a lot of times, I'm not in complete agreement with the GASB announcements. This one, I think it's great. I think it kind of breaks out the opinion as to, you know, what is the report? You know, what are the responsibilities of management, the auditors' responsibilities, and our opinion, which, as Jim mentioned, is an unqualified opinion. It's a clean opinion. And further, there's an opinion on RSI, or non-opinion, and other information, which is included in the back of the report. So moving along to the financials themselves, they start out with the management discussion and analysis. Just gives the district an opportunity to present its financial information. It's an unaudited portion of the statements, but you get to shine here. You get to, you know, kind of brag about your district and what your finances are. Beginning on page 13, these are the, now the statement of net position. That was a change recently enacted, I believe that was GASB 61. And it used to be called the statement of net assets. So in order to drive auditors crazy, they change the terminology every once in a while just to kind of mix it up. So it's no longer the statement of net assets, it's the statement of net position. These are the more long-term statements. These have your, these are full accrual. They have all of your liabilities, all of your assets included here, including capital assets. Page 14 is the statement of activities, which follows the long-term statements, kind of walks you through the governmental activities, your expenses. They start with your expenses, and then they list your, any direct, either charges for services or operating grants that you receive that directly affect those expenses. And then in the bottom, they have your operating assessments, which aren't attributable to any one expense category. That would be your assessments to the member towns, or, you know, for the general operations of the entire district, not for any one expense. On page 15, this is the governmental funds balance sheet. This is your more near-term statement. These are modified accrual. These do not have all of your liabilities listed. This would be the document the state would use to calculate, or begin to calculate your E and D, your excess and deficiency. So if you look at the first column, the general fund towards the bottom, it's reserved for certain, you know, different buckets, I call them. You know, we have restricted funds, assigned, you can have non-spendable, committed, and unassigned. Your unassigned balance, $1,038,321, that's the number the state uses to start to calculate your E and D figure. I feel that this is, you know, you've done well managing your budget. That's why you have $1 million in unassigned funds. And you continue, you've continued to manage your budget well in all of the audits that we've prepared for the district. So moving along, I would like to just point out, on page 19, auditors get excited about little things. I changed up the budget versus actual presentation a little bit, hopefully to add some additional information for the reader. I've added a couple of columns, one being the amounts carried forward, or your encumbrances from the prior year that are brought over as part of the budgetary process in the new year. And then at the end of the year, you carry over budgetary items expenditures to the next fiscal year. So I've broken out those two columns to hopefully, you know, provide some additional useful information. The variance column on the end is still the same. This is where your E and D is, this is where it comes from. So how did you perform against your budget? You intended to use over $1 million between E and D and your prior year encumbrances. You actually provided a surplus of $680,000 during the year. $187,000 of that from revenues and $505,000 from expenditures. So all the way to the right on page 19 are your positive variances, how you performed against the budget.
On that page, why does the final budget have a higher E and D amount?
That would have been the amount that was used and transferred to the community, the major fund, the Community Education Fund?
Yeah. 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 So we were going to take $367,000 of E and D to finally close that business down?
Correct.
Okay.
So you didn't have a revenue source for that, so you're using E and D to fund that So the remainder of the statements, you know, what we have are the notes to the statements. Hopefully, they explain some of the major asset liability and fund position categories. Actually, I'd like to, you know, point out the debt on page 35. Your future debt service at the top of the page, principal of $11,671 with interest out to 2025 of $3,206. You have one year left on an equipment finance lease. And the bottom has the changes in all of your liabilities, long-term notes, bonds, capital leases, and OPEB. And there's a, you know, quite a lengthy footnote disclosure on OPEB. I know we've talked at length about OPEB at this meeting, and I've talked about it at many exit conferences. It's a very hot topic. But that starts on page 36 and runs through page 38. Your OPEB obligation on page 37 is increased by almost $1 million. It's up to $4.8 million. That is reflected in your statement of net position. That's your full accrual statements. That's why you have a negative number in your net position, as do 100% probably of the school districts that are out there.
How is that relative to other school districts?
Yeah, it depends on the size and the payroll that you have, but, you know, it's comparable. I mean, given the size of the district, it's not, it's not out of alignment of what we normally see. Moving forward through the statements, pages 44 and 45, two statements of what we call RSI, Required Supplementary Information. Provided a schedule of funding progress on OPEB on page 45, you know, on page 44. And page 45 is a schedule of funding progress on your Norfolk County Regional Retirement System. You may ask, well, why is that statement here? It's kind of the precursor to GASB 68, which was issued, which will be effective for your district in 2015. GASB 68 is going to require you to record your portion of the unfunded liability into your financial statements, similar to OPEB. It's going to increase that liability, and by default, it's going to decrease your net position.
Only in the full accrual.
But only in the full accrual statements, not on your near-term balance sheet. So, you know, I put, this is really here for discussion purposes. This is going to be required, a footnote similar to this, an RSI similar to this in 2015 into your financial statements.
Can I have a question? Clearly, that requirement is going to bring to the fore something which has always been assumed or perhaps forgotten about in the background. Is it likely to have an impact, assuming we don't set it, put an awful lot of money in there to turn that negative number into a positive number? Is it likely to have an effect on, say, our bond rating or anything like that?
No. At least in the near-term, I have not heard any discussion about this affecting your bond rating. As, as, you know, I think OPEB has still not affected the bond ratings of any school districts that I know of.
Or have fixed assets, fixed assets have an effect?
Correct. Correct. So they still focus on the balance sheet, they still focus on that budgetary statement, and whether you can fund your operations with your existing revenues, that's very important. So, no, I have not heard that discussion. And on page 47, the last statement, we provide this as additional supplementary information. It walks you through, back in the governmental funds balance sheet, we had a non-major governmental funds. This kind of walks you through what makes up those non-major funds, whether it's grants, revolving accounts, debt service requirements. Again, it's just more, hopefully, helpful information to explain the financial numbers. That was my very quick run-through. And I do want to mention, before I forget, there are no material weaknesses in your internal controls, and there are no significant deficiencies. I do not have a management letter for you, because we are going to complete that student activity audit, which you engaged us to do. And we didn't have the time to finish that until, or we won't have the time until January. So I want to kind of roll all that together, and if there are management points related to those student activity counts, I want to make sure that that gets incorporated into the document. So that will be forthcoming. But I just wanted to let you know that we don't have any significant deficiencies. And finally, I do want to thank the staff. And I think one of the reasons you don't have any material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, even if you had a management letter, it would be very benign in the comments, I think it starts here. This is the control environment, it's the tone at the top. I think you set your expectation of what you want for an internal control system, internal control over financial reporting and general internal controls, and it's carried out by your employees, and they do an excellent job of doing that. So I do want to thank them. As far as the audit goes, it's a very smooth audit, a lot of cooperation, and we can be very intrusive, so we do appreciate that.
Thank you. We want to thank them too. Thank you, Chris.
Throw it out there for anybody that has any questions, or anything you want to talk about.
Mine were more kind of actuarial in nature, so I wasn't sure whether we had the right audience or not for those.
Would you like to pose a question? I'll see if...
Well, I mean, first was some concerns around the OPEB liability assessment that was dated 2012, and whether, where you felt like the assumptions that the actuaries used, were they on the conservative side in terms of being prudent, or the optimistic side in terms of having a lower, lower number? I've seen other studies that have higher rates of medical care inflation, lower discount rates, and they get a significantly larger liability.
Excellent point, because I've seen the same. You are actuary, who I actually know, I've worked with on many engagements in reviewing his reports. He uses pretty much these same assumptions, but they do differ from other assumptions that other actuaries will provide to you. And I can tell you that, depending on where you fall, conservative or aggressive here, you have a wide range of numbers. If you change the assumptions, you will change that bottom line.
So where do you think we are on that spectrum for OPEB's?
Yeah, I think he's probably not on the ultra-conservative side. I think if you...
Did you say not?
Not.
Not.
I'm sorry.
But I think, but I...
Not on the ultra-conservative side, which is to say...
But that's not the aggressive side, or that's not...
Your numbers are probably lower than they would be if you switched firms and they changed some of the major, either trend assumptions, data assumptions related to retirement. All of those would factor into a larger number. But I'll tell you one thing, his numbers are consistent, and I think they're well-thought-out. So, you know, I don't know if that answers your question, but I'd...
Well, I mean, you're not an actuary, so I wasn't trying to put you...
But without asking for an opinion about where the truth lies, obviously, which is a...
Somewhere.
Not a wide range.
Yeah.
Where, where are our assumptions in the range of similar schools in our area?
Oh, I think they're right there, right in the middle. You know, I think, you know, if you get numbers on one side or the other, they're going to change this bottom line. I think you're somewhere in the middle.
I think, we audit, my firm audits five school districts, and of the five we audit, four of them have Primoris as the actuary. And I don't, you know, I don't think Primoris is aggressive, and I don't think they're so conservative. I think they're middle of the road, and they have a great reputation. I think that it's a pretty good representation of reasonable liability based upon, you know, GASB 45.
And I guess my concern was seeing medical or healthcare cost inflation numbers of only 5% when even, you know, our most recent budgets are, you know, 5% would be an extremely good year. Some of that's, who knows why our usage is going up, but a lot of it is still the rate for any particular plan is growing much faster than 5% a year.
And, you know, and I know that, as an actuary, I know that Primoris is looking. And it has to do all the actuaries. But, you know, like you said it best, I'm not an actuary, so...
Yeah, so I'm not trying to...
You know, it's how he came up with his rationale.
Yeah.
You know, but I do think it's based on, you know, a set of facts that he feels comfortable with. In my discussions with him, he feels very comfortable with the numbers that he presents to all the districts and towns.
And then, the other concern that's come to my attention recently is that the way Norfolk manages the pension administration, and this is the first time I've ever seen, you know, that, that schedule on page 45 or whatever was very helpful. It's very difficult to get any information out of, out of that organization. But the fact that we are pooled with all the other communities in Norfolk County that participate in that plan, and we are billed at a rate for pensions that, you know, clearly we have no public service employees that have much more favorable pension schedules. And, you know, are there options for us, do you think, or is that something that we should... And I know in Middlesex County, when you go back over to our hometown, handles things on a separate account basis, so it's everywhere.
Well, I think that's where we're going. That's where GASB 68 is bringing this. They're bringing this, and this is the way it used to. It's funny, because back in the 80s, they used to break out each individual government and do their own little actuarial study of each government and present those numbers. And then they moved away from that. Well, GASB 68 is going to pull that back. And I, and I...
Do you agree with my concern?
I think what's going to happen, you know, you can't...
Because we don't have police or fire.
Exactly. And there's a different, you know, there's different benefits for those types of employees with different pensions. So, and I think that is what GASB 68 is going to hopefully address and bring those numbers back into alignment of what they should be, rather than a full basis. It's, yeah, this is what, you know, these are the employees you have, this is what they're going to receive in retirement, and this is how we're going to calculate that liability.
So I think GASB 68 is looking to force some oversight, because, you know, they don't even get a natural evaluation report every year.
Correct.
So it's really, I think it's been a little bit loose over the last, over the years, and I think it'll force them to be more diligent about having a natural evaluation done timely and more often. And as you pointed out, you know, making sure that the different entities that are under that umbrella, you know, get what their responsibility is, their liability, more than just allocating it without an actual evaluation report.
Rather than just a percentage of what your, your assessment to the total assessment?
Well, I think they did it on a payroll basis.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah. And hopefully, that, you're right, that they consider the different groups of employees and how their benefits differ, and that's reflected in that.
So possibly next year's auditing cycle will have our, will have an assessment done by Norfolk County, and it'll be strictly related to the liabilities being incurred by our, by our staff?
In 2015, that is the requirement.
Isn't that next year?
2015 statements or 2016?
2015 audit statements.
Okay, so two years from now.
True, yeah.
Anything else?
No?
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. You recommend that any steps be taken regarding the OPEB obligation?
What's difficult, especially being a school district, you don't have a dedicated revenue source that you could allocate to that obligation. What I have heard other districts starting to talk about is maybe a fund balance policy, so that, you know, if you're a fund balancer, E and D at the end of the year is $750,000, that you set a policy of what you feel you're comfortable with in E and D, and the remainder of that be used to fund the OPEB obligation. Or a portion, I mean, you're not going to fund the entire OPEB obligation, but, you know, I have heard talk of districts moving in that direction. Because if you try to build it into your current budget, you're going to be doing that by assessing the towns. 93% of your general fund revenue is from the towns. About 7% is from the state. So if you're going to fund this obligation, you're going to fund it through the towns as part of their assessment, or maybe through a fund balance policy, you know, in your budgetary savings during the year, using some of that budgetary savings to fund a portion of this obligation.
Would you see a crisis coming?
I mean, there's, you know, it's, we continue to promise a lot of benefits, whether that's OPEB, whether that's healthcare, pension. And as we promise these benefits and we become an older generation, there's fewer employees that are going to be working to pay for those benefits. And those, those costs are going to go up. And I think that's, that's really what they want you to understand with OPEB, and even with GASB 68, the pension requirement, just to understand that this liability is there. This liability is earned during an employee's lifetime, not just when they retire. Because we continue to promise these benefits, so somehow we need to pay for them. So it's going to consume more of your budget as we move further into, you know, the greater amount of retirees versus current employees. It's just a fact, it's a... So it's a, it's really an educational process. How you fund that, I mean, that's the difficult part. Because do you want to fund that at the expense of providing education? Or do you want, you know, if you approach the towns and say, you know, we're concerned about this liability, and we want to start to fund it, are you receptive to that? Because that's where that money is going to be coming.
In the budget, was any particular accommodation made for the...
No, Lanny, in the talking points that I'll go over, there's no placeholder for OPEB consideration. That's really for the committee to decide if they'd like to move in that direction with respect to OPEB.
Anything else? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move quickly here to the brief report from the Capitol Committee and consideration of requesting a placeholder for funding capital projects on the town meeting boards since spring.
If we have the students...
Oh, sure, yeah. Oh, I thought, yeah.
You don't want to listen to me talk about capital projects?
Yeah. Yeah. We actually, we'll land on that, and turn the floor to Jonathan Raffo and Ilia Fattori. Welcome. We're here to make a presentation about extension. I've seen your privilege, and I will...
Okay.
Turn around to you.
Before we begin, we would like to thank Mr. Bliss and Mr. Smith and the school committees for allowing us to present you tonight. Additionally, we would like to thank the members of the senior class who came out to support the proposal, including senior class vice president Evan Wood, senior class treasurer Daniel Wood, and senior representative and also student council treasurer Jack Lothrup. And Jonathan and I are the president and vice president of the student council. And we have been working on this proposal since last spring. We were ready to go ahead with it, but with the shift in transition, shift in leadership with Mrs. Lonigan leaving, she advised us to hold off on it until this year. So currently, the open campus policy is open for seniors just the second semester. On this year, the second semester begins on the 27th of November, which is when this policy would begin if the extension is not approved. And what we are proposing is that the privilege be partially extended into the first semester to begin tomorrow after forms are handed in. And this will only be four academic weeks earlier than it normally would begin due to winter break and mid-year exams. So taken directly from the student handbook, this is what senior privilege is. Students with good academic standing have the ability, with their parents to decide if they would like to be able to be dismissed from an unlimited amount of DRs, first period and last period, not including second lunch. The second option is first period and last period, including second lunch. And the third option is unlimited first period and last period, including second lunch, in addition to 15 times where students can leave during periods two through five during three blocks. However, we are only asking for the first option to be available for the first semester, so the one in red. This would only allow seniors to leave after second lunch for last period DRs and come in late after first period DRs. So who is eligible, as we said on the last slide, students in good academic standing are available, are open to this privilege, sensible if... Sensible if this was approved, it would obviously just be based on first semester, or first term grades. We would keep the standards the same. They would need to have a form submitted and no grades lower than a C minus. So these are the benefits that we see to the extension. First, seniors would have the opportunity to work on college applications at home. These next four weeks are a very crucial time period for seniors with applications, and it's nice to be able to work on applications in the setting of your own home. Sometimes DRs are allowed and you're unable to do your best work. Additionally, the current policy that is only open during second semester is discriminates against students who have a heavier course load second semester. Some students may add on other electives or GIMs second semester, which would give them less opportunities to use the privilege that they have. And it's kind of just unlucky jobs based on the way that guidance does the schedules if seniors have ample opportunities to use the policy. Additionally, seniors who go on senior project will leave at the beginning of fourth term and won't have very many opportunities to use this, that, this policy that we feel teaches students how to use time that is unassigned responsibly. Also, since we do not have a assistant headmaster at the high school currently, this extension, partial extension, would allow Mr. Smith to see a glimpse of how the policy works and be able to get a feel for how it works before it goes into full effect in the second semester. And finally, many nearby comparable schools have even more local policies. For example, in Westwood, seniors are allowed to come in late, leave early, and leave during the day when they have two consecutive free blocks for the whole entire year, and seniors are able to come in late all year. Lincoln Sudbury has open campus for juniors and seniors, with the only requirement being that they have 10 hours of community service completed. They feel that this helps students learn how to use unassigned free time responsibly. And finally, another example, the medium has open campus for juniors and seniors completely. At this time, that is the presentation. If you have any questions, you can have us fill them.
If I may, Mr. Robinson, even before this regional school, I'd very like to just thank Amelia and Jonathan, who began meeting with us several weeks ago, really a few months ago regarding senior privilege and its extension. And I just want to, regardless of y'all, come thank them and commend you for your leadership in advancing this topic. And I would just extend our congratulations to you for doing that and for representing your class in our regard.
Thanks. Could you, for my benefit, reiterate the request, I understand it's starting tomorrow, that part, but then there were three, then there were three options, and you said only the first one. Just reiterate what that was and what it would mean to?
So the only thing that we're asking for, for the remainder of the first semester is for seniors to be able to come in late and leave early. We're not asking for seniors to be able to leave during the day.
Okay.
Yes?
Can you explain what the current policy is with respect to the second semester, what the handbooks is?
That's what's listed here. The part in red is the part that we're asking. The first bullet point is what we are asking to be included for the first semester, but students have, who meet their requirements, are eligible to choose any of the options that are listed.
So in the second semester, you'd be able to leave during the day if you had like a DR during your launch or some sort of like setup like that?
And, and there's something about 15 DRs? What is?
So one of the options is, the last option is that students are able to come in late and leave early an unlimited amount of times, and 15 times they're able to leave during the day. That's only for the second semester, we're not asking for that though.
But that currently isn't placed?
That's currently only for the second semester, correct.
And so the kids sign in and out after 15 times?
Yeah.
Anything else? Still processing.
Well, if I may?
Yeah, sure.
I have never been a proponent of open campus privilege, so I'm voting against it. And I have voted that way since it was first proposed, and it was a much abbreviated version, so it's gotten wider and bigger over the years. So I'm, I just want to say I'm sorry I just stand very differently on the issue.
Well, that leads me to say that in light of the fact that we have kids coming to school at 7:30 in the morning, which is really too early for, for health. You know, all of the sleep studies that have been done, and we heard some of that last year, about how much sleep kids need to be healthy. It seems to me that, and we've talked about how we might be able to start the school day later so that kids can learn more and be, and be healthier. It seems to me that the morning piece of this makes good sense based on the research that kids die, and also systems and just basic wellness, because I think in all likelihood what they'll be doing in the morning if they don't come to school isn't getting into trouble, they'll probably be sleeping, which I think that it's pretty clear they need. So I would say at least to that piece of it, it seems like a wellness item rather than a time management item. And I, so I'm just going to separate that out in terms of my thinking. I mean, I happen to believe that kids should, I believe in open campuses. I mean, I, but, but that, I think that you got to separate the end of the day from the beginning of the day, because I think very different things are happening during those times. I think that in the beginning of the day, kids will probably be sleeping, which they need to do. They probably won't be, they probably won't be waking up to work on college applications. I'm just guessing as the mother of a senior.
So this still requires the parent's approval, so it's parent, it's parent option?
Yep.
And then are we getting a, an input from the headmaster since he's the one who has oversight of the folks impacted? And then I don't want to interrupt the floor, but it seems like?
Mr. Smith? Amelia and Jonathan had, you know, first talked about extending it to first semester. And I had said to them, as we were going through the process, and they both had done a fantastic job of sort of laying out the reasons and the arguments for it. And, you know, one of the difficulties was, first of all, I was new and it's a different culture than what I was accustomed to, my previous district. That being said, I certainly was willing to uphold what the handbook had in place and the rights that the students had for second semester. And there was more discussion about, well, could we perhaps look at extending it into first semester, because that had been something that had been certainly brought up and had been deferred by the previous headmasters. So we talked a little bit about, well, how would we manage this? And, you know, one of the difficulties, I'm fortunate to have Ms. Lonigan on board for evaluations, but that's primarily it. So right now, a lot of other people are stepping up and helping out and doing, you know, a lot of different things, including folks in the main office. That being said, I think that the compromise actually makes some sense. The morning piece, I do believe in. I am a firm believer, have been in high school education for a while, and certainly do think that we start school too early. I really do think that 7:30, whereas it works, it's hard, and all the research speaks, you know, against such an early start, and hopefully, you know, maybe we will at some point take a look at that. The, the end of the day, I do have concerns. I do have concerns partly because so many of our students are engaged and involved with extracurricular activities, clubs, the drama program, athletics. And that's something that I think I've, I've tried to wrap my head around, how, how does that work? Certainly the morning piece to me is a no-brainer. I'd love to see these kids get more sleep. I think it would benefit their, their health, their mental health, their wellness, the afternoon component. Now, that being said, Amelia's argument is also very valid to say, well, this would give me an opportunity to see a piece of it in action before second semester kicks in where it is much more open. There's 15, it's during the day. So I think, that being said, you know, certainly with parental permission, I would, I would support this proposal, knowing that I have some concerns about the afternoon.
Does this put a lot of pressure on counseling or in the guidance department to put DRs first and last period for seniors going forward? Because if I were picking my classes, I want to know when those classes are going to be, if this is an option that's going to be open to me next year.
It could be, yeah.
And have they weighed in on this?
I think that, you know, counselors would probably, for the most part, look at it from the wellness component of it, because that's what, you know, they're seeing. So I think that that morning component certainly would make sense. The morning component would make sense also for the access for our library, because right now, the way it works, seniors have first privilege to go into the library for directed research. So Mr. Byderworth can only take so many students. This would actually free up more underclassmen to come into media. But there's no doubt that part of that could be based on how they try to schedule it, yeah?
There's a gentleman at the back who's about to make an excellent point about the routine scheduling.
But just to clarify, the schedule is very thick, so there's no fixed first period.
And the kids don't get to choose their courses based on when they meet in high school.
They don't really know.
Good point. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Versus what you did in college.
They don't, but they can also, once they figure out where things do fall, can make adjustments.
Anything else?
I guess one question I have, and I understand that for this year, we're only talking about four or five weeks, but the only other question I have is, is you're setting now precedent for next year, I think. So the counter that I would have is, as a new headmaster, do you, would you rather have one semester of everything second semester to give a try before you're committing to that policy for next year?
We're not committing to it for next year. We, we don't have to. Historically, senior privilege came up each year, and then whatever it was, two years ago, we put it in the handbook, so we can do whatever we want to. And I would be unwilling to just write it into the handbook, even if we're approving it now. So that's, that's certainly entirely within our privilege to do that.
I have one comment and one question. The, the comment is that I think that first semester seniors are probably less inclined to get into trouble than second semester seniors. So if we're concerned about that, it seems to me that we might want to make the shift anyway, because I think that they're more focused on how they're doing academically first semester than they are second semester. At least that's what I've seen in the world. The, my other question, though, actually is, is a sort of a technicality, and that has to do with the incomplete thing. It seems to me that there are kids who could have incompletes for reasons that might be beyond their control. I just want to, and to preclude the, an incomplete is different than a bad grade, and kids get incompletes for any number of reasons. I, I'm not entirely sure I understand that, and I would like to understand that a little bit better.
Yeah, my understanding in talking to Denise about the incompletes is usually within two weeks, in most cases, students are required to make those up. There's always some extenuating circumstances, medical illnesses, other pieces. The idea behind that is the students would focus on completing that because by being in school, perhaps it's a matter of catching up with the teachers, it's seeing the teachers during the DRs, it's making up those tests and quizzes during the DR time so they can complete the grade. Whereas if they also had that same privilege, I think that the thought process was that perhaps that incomplete would extend itself and not not?
I've seen the incomplete thing on the honor roll, and I've had a problem with that also, because if a kid gets an incomplete because the kid is sick and it takes longer to complete it, to lose this kind of privilege or, or not to be recognized for the, for their efforts is a little bit problematic. Also, as I said, and I'm going to say again, first semester seniors don't want incompletes. And if, you know, and arguably, just as you can do a application more easily at home, you may study more effectively at home as well. And I'm just throwing it out there.
Okay.
Seems a little punitive.
Anything else? I'd like to suggest we consider a vote about the morning and then separately consider a vote about the afternoon. Is there any objection to that before we formalize a motion?
I was going to suggest it. It's not too late.
All right. I would make the following motion then, that we approve extension of senior privilege for this year only, for the first, for the remainder of the first semester, and only to apply for the morning to wit whatever it is that you get to.
DRs first, during the first block?
Yeah, thank you, for, for DRs during the first block.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that motion in particular?
Charlie, you want to?
That one's okay with me.
All right. If there's no more discussion, let's take a vote on that, all those in favor.
All right.
Five zero, uh, five, nothing, yeah. And now, I would like to make a motion to approve extension of senior privilege for the remainder of the first semester for this year only, specifically for the afternoon for when there's a free DR in the last period. Did I get that right? That's the other part of this, right? Any discussion on that? Second, any discussion on that?
So can the parents' approval be split?
Two different parts. Is this going to make anybody's life?
Yeah, within administrative?
Too complicated if we do this?
Okay.
Because, because we can back off if, I'm sorry, I didn't ask that first.
Well, if it, oh, you mean can a parent choose?
Can a parent say mornings are fine, afternoons no?
Oh, I think, well, yes, I
Again, I don't want to, I don't want to impose an administrative burden that's well beyond the value of all this.
The permission form to?
You know, I think for the, for the next four weeks, that's not a terrible
But in general, I can see parents having a similar viewpoint of this, mornings okay, afternoons no, I'd rather no.
Mrs. Smith, do you clarify what you're, you said you had some concerns about the PM with extracurriculars. Do you articulate that?
Right, so if a student for their last block has a DR, they leave, you know, and many of them are still actively engaged in after-school activities, so it's just, it's then coming back to campus. Whereas I look at the morning as they're home, they're likely sleeping, or maybe they are studying, or whatever they, they are choosing, and then they are coming to school. So it's kind of one trip, whereas it has the potential for more trips and more problems.
I have a question. What I don't see, though, is how would having the afternoon piece in the second semester be any different than having the afternoon piece in the first semester? Because it wouldn't change people's behaviors to have the afternoon piece in second behavior. And in fact, they might actually become worse in the second semester because we don't have to worry about like first term grades and all of that being placed into our college decisions over the platform.
Don't make, don't make our case worse, careful there. Right, you're right, there's nothing
I think it's about precedent.
Unique about first semester that would, that would be different in terms of consideration. It's a question about perhaps precedent, it's a question about
Well, also, kids older presumably second semester than they are and maybe have better judgment. I assume that that's why the, the policy was put into play.
Suddenly on January 27th, everyone has good judgment.
Well, no, I'm just guessing at why it would ever have been written the way it was.
There's a hundred different developmental processes going on, and they all continue it all. Any other discussion about this before we take a vote? Okay, for the question of afternoon senior privilege, all those in favor?
Against?
Against, four one. Passes? Anything else, Mr. Bliss? On this subject, anything else, Amelia or Jonathan on this?
Thank you.
You did a great job.
Thank you, all, thank you, ladies. Actually, I do need to interrupt on, on one question, and that is, Mr. Smith, are you actually ready to begin this tomorrow? Because that seems awfully dissapient to me.
Well, they need the permission form.
We need the form to be, to be put in, so chances are some is going to be here, too.
Okay.
Well, no, the parents have to.
So seniors, congratulations, but, but please don't show up late tomorrow because you won't actually be able to take advantage of the senior privilege.
Yeah, I have to say, thank you guys for coming in. I think it means a lot when it's not just two of your colleagues up voicing opinions on your behalf. I think it's valuable when the rest of you come in as well, so thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on, and we are moving to Capitol Committee and the important question of placeholder warrants.
Oh, yes, now I can call it Capitol. Thank God. Thank God. All right. So in your binder, the budget binder in the packet, I believe, sorry, is an update from Michael and me on the Capitol Subcommittee. Not huge changes from where we were a month ago. We continued to work with, with Mr. Bliss, Mr. Kelly, and Ms. Tagg to do a few things. We made sure that all of the list of projects that were not, anything that was not on the onsite insight list was actually in our database. We looked at a few different projects to see if there's any economies of scale or an opportunity to combine multi-year projects into one. There was about 20-odd items in last year's parking lot, and we need to make sure that they landed somewhere instead of just living in the parking lot. And we were successful on all but one. The observatory continues to live in the parking lot because we, we still, we believe that there's an opportunity out there to find some potential outside funding and, and do it intelligently. And then finally, there were a few projections we wanted to dig into a little bit in, more in depth. Once that was all in the database, Michael did a re-sort and resummed all of the, the lines for fiscal year 15 through 18, as well as estimating 19, because we knew that the towns were looking for much more than just a one-year estimate in order to make the right decisions for this year. We continue to make progress on talking with Sherburne Energy to try and do some energy-saving projects and look for external funding, as well as, as we'll get to later today, some opportunities to work with the Fudge, the Fudge Foundation, sorry, and boosters in terms of external sources. And then continue to meet with our towns' finance committees so that we understood and worked within their timing and their process. So the numbers that are in the lovely green box are the current numbers that we're working with, totaling 362,000 for fiscal year 15, 432 for 16, 396 for 17, and 230 for 18, as well as an estimate of 450 in fiscal year 19, which averages it right around $375,000 across the board. As you'll know, that is a slight increase in fiscal year 15 from where we were in October, and that includes 21 different projects, with the observatory still sitting by itself in the parking lot, and, and quite a number of energy efficiency projects that hopefully we'll have a chance to, to identify and work through over the next, over the next year. So we would, historically, we've been worried, making sure that we got the which projects were on the list for this year, and I think we feel pretty confident that we've gotten about as close to that optimal list as we can get for this year. I think that it's important to know that we tried to balance fiscal responsibility and trying to really keep in fiscal year 15 what really should be in 15. If it could be pushed out to 16 or 17, we did our, we did our very best to try and move those projects out and really made sure that we were managing the properties and the assets in a, in a responsible manner to keep anything from building up and hitting us for much larger numbers down the road. So given that 362,000 is where we're coming up for fiscal year 15, I think that our recommendation is we use that publicly and start moving forward with that as our number for the warrants for the end of the year.
Question, on the energy efficiency line down below 639, 29, and 00s, are those broken out because, why? I don't quite get why we're not, do we have to pay for them? Or is it there because we don't have?
They were in onsite's report not because the fixture was at the end of its useful life, but they proposed upgrading it to more energy-efficient fixtures. So it struck us that we would only add those projects if through a combination of grants or third-party funding or a cost-benefit analysis, they made sense to be done before the end of the useful life. And that's a little bit out of our skill set, so what we did is we looked around for somebody who could, you know, put some time into that, and when we found that.
If we stick our head in the sand and don't do anything about those projects whatsoever, nobody else does anything about them whatsoever, when do they start, in fact, needing to be put back into the budget because they're going to break down?
That'd be an excellent question for Ralph.
There's an intermittent placeholder for light fixture replacements.
Right, the other thing is they would then sprinkle back out through the next 15 years. So I don't think it would hit in a huge amount in any one year.
We are in process of an energy audit, which we previously had. At that time, it didn't make sense, but three years have passed. So we need to regroup and go over that.
So, but I guess, and I just, just to make sure I understand, so, so if we ignored that group for a couple of years, we're not running into trouble?
No.
I, I don't, I can't imagine why, I mean, light fixtures tend to be fairly durable.
It's more that there's a return on investment for doing the more energy efficient.
And so 362, should we ask for it and, and begin it for next year, would put us in good stead? And then 432 the year after that, is there any thought, stomach wish to average at least those two numbers out rather than wait to ask for more in the second year?
I think that we felt that, we felt that this was.
That's a question for our Capitol Committee and Finance Committee Partners.
But we were trying to put on our, we were trying to put on our fiscal responsible hat on.
I mean, none of the guidance letters said we have untapped cash this year that's going away.
I think the other interesting thing is of the 21 projects that are in fiscal year 15, none of them are excessively large. So then the, the good thing is, is that the likelihood of our coming in towards these numbers is pretty good because there's not one thing that would throw it way out of whack.
Please, thank you. First of all, I want to thank Chris and Michael and Dana and Ralph. Just an incredible amount of work has gone into this, so thank you so much for that. I thought that this would logically beg the question, where are we with the intermunicipal agreement? Would be, I think, a topic of discussion. I actually had an email conversation with, exchange with Mr. Caruso this morning, went into this afternoon, and the topic of the IMA is being advanced to the Board of Selectmen in Sherburne. He has made, he, Mr. Caruso, has made a request of David Williams, the town administrator in Sherburne, some of, for some evaluation and analysis to be completed of cost and other impacts. He's made that request of Mr. Williams and expects the topic to be brought to the full Board of Selectmen, with no promise of any particular outcome, other than that would happen, he hopes. I would like to see the IMA issue on the agenda with this information in hand before the end of the year or in early January at the latest.
So, thank you, thanks for pushing that.
Any bond prospectuses show up yet?
No, I'd ask, I'd ask the question if there was anything, if there was anything more that anyone needed in terms of Rick Manley's provision of bond prospectuses, the answer was no, that they, they had everything they think they need, but he seeks more information.
So I have a couple of questions, may I?
Please.
In our budget, there's extraordinary maintenance in, for 33,540, and that's close to, we used to put capital items in there close to 35,000. So is that the same, we're putting a placeholder for capital items?
That's then what's happened, and that basically is a pool of money that could be used for capital.
Okay. And I haven't looked at the list in detail onsite insight, but there were some things that were capital-like and then others were more maintenance, and you had worked all that out of the truth?
Yep.
So is this list that you're giving us of the 362 inclusive of all of it? So some could be broken down and be considered routine maintenance?
No. No, Ralph has taken things that were like sprinkler heads and.
Irrigation heads.
Real, real operating, ongoing maintenance, and brought it into his operating.
Okay, and, and is that part of the 33,000 and change, or is that somewhere else?
No, I think that's not.
That's actually part of his overall, if you look at that line, is another line item of reserve? And that is for extraordinary maintenance such as the sprinklers and.
That's, that would include sprinkler heads.
The largest amount was painting projects.
Right.
And so any painting project that didn't require specialized staging, et cetera, he has baked into his summertime workload and OT calculations.
Which is considerably cheaper labor.
Okay, all right. So if we, if we move forward with a 362, would we pull out the extraordinary maintenance or that's, that would stay in there?
That's, that's not in, when you say extraordinary maintenance.
Well, that's the line item on page eight.
So you're asking that for 360?
The 33,540.
But there's no money in FY14 if I'm looking at it right.
Oh, yeah, you're right, you're right, you're right. Thank you. Okay. Okay, thank you.
So the, if, if the committee were to decide to move forward, we would have proposed warrant article descriptions of total of 21 projects, including exterior doors, maintenance truck, flooring, ceiling work, restroom and locker renovation work, concrete work in front of a high school. The regional school district conducted a 20-year study of its six buildings comprising the regional campus. Specifically, the study considered all capital improvements needed to maintain the buildings so as to support a safe learning environment for students and staff. The study reflects the good work that has been done in maintaining the campus buildings and also reiterates that a preventative and proactive approach to capital maintenance is critical in maintaining the region's assets. Fiscal year 2015, school year 2014-15 represents the second year of improvements echoed in the study. We are proceeding thoughtfully, conservatively, and responsibly in order to meet these capital needs most needed while recognizing the financial constraints of the region and of our two-member towns.
So that's the warrant article?
That's actually what we would submit as placeholders to both Dover and Sherburne.
You were making some references to specific projects. Did you want to include in those references the van?
It is actually, we have down here.
Because that's the largest of them by reply.
So we have embedded in the operating budget a lease for the purchase of a van? The, we've embedded monies for leasing a van, that's one of the talking points of the fiscal 15 budget.
Then now we change that number down.
It could be backed, the van could be backed out if the lease, remember, we wanted to do, we wanted to make sure we had that option.
Is that the 18,000?
No, so $47,000 syndicat accessible transport.
So I guess at this point, let's, it sounds like we have one open item that we didn't realize we had, so 362 would be the high end. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, because we have a placeholder in the budget, we want to make sure that's discussed at this level.
47,7.
So I guess my question is, how are we going to have discussions with the towns about this before, you know, we, we can't move one budget forward without knowing what's going to happen with the capital items, so it definitely has to be conversation with the towns as we move forward. You know, for instance, is, is Sherburne Capital and Dover Warrant going to look at these, this list of 362 and itemize and say, we support this, we don't support that? I mean, that, that could come to pass.
We traditionally, I mean, when we've submitted this in the past, as we did this past year for $122,000 in the current fiscal year of capital projects, we followed the same, the same protocol. I think the largest issue is the funding mechanism.
Well, it's also a bigger fund amount than we've ever had, so, so funding it is, is critical.
So the nearest I can answer your question is, we start those discussions as soon as the school committee is comfortable saying, this is what we, let's go talk.
We already have engaged both.
Right, but we didn't want to put a final, we didn't even want to put a number as, we didn't want to represent that the committee was comfortable with that number until we knew everyone was comfortable with that number.
Right, right.
But they also know what zone.
Order of magnitude.
Order of magnitude we're playing at the moment.
And one of the critical variables, we're, we're trying to meet the deadline of just having this placeholder literally there not to say that it couldn't be adjusted.
So, so it seems that we have a couple of things. One is we have to decide whether we want to put forward the articles, and that, I'll just leave a vote on that in a minute. The other is if we're getting feedback from the towns that this is just too big a number to ask, which I hope we won't, because, let me say this to the cameras, in fact, we need this money in order to maintain this campus the way that it ought to be maintained for, for now, for next year, for the next decade and future generations. This isn't an item that should be put off. Anyway, I'll get off my notebook, back to now, and say that if, in fact, people don't see it the way that, that at least I see it, then we need to worry about, do we need to adjust our budget?
Operating budget.
Right.
To drop some of these things so that we can, you know, at least, at least do that. But that, I hope at least we can probably put off that discussion at least until we begin to get a feel, you know, put off a, a feel for how those discussions move. And are you guys, you, I know that you, you've been talking with, or do you have plans to go back to?
Yes, December 16th, I believe we go to Dover Capital.
And then I will follow up at this point, now that we have a new round of numbers and scheduled again.
I might be out of date, so.
Would you, when you, when those dates are finalized?
They don't go to Capital.
Let me know.
Right, that was the point I brought up.
I know, but I thought we were supposed to go as a courtesy to let them know what the general number was.
That's right.
No?
Yeah. All right, so the new number would be 314, 314,300.
Yeah.
Does that work for you guys?
It's only, we would like to go through the, would like.
Yeah, I'm not ready to just go to 315.
All right, I mean, the number is going to shift anyway, okay, so we'll stick with 362.
That's mine.
All right. I would propose the following motion, that the school committee seek to obtain capital funding on the floor of town meetings, amounts in the neighborhood of 300 to 350,000 dollars, you know.
No, to 362.
Thank you very much, 365,000.
Not to exceed 362.
Not to exceed 362,000 dollars. Got all that, Amy? Thank you. And the final number to come later, obviously, after we.
And just a point of clarification, how do we incorporate that into the budget?
We don't know. And that, that I think, that's what I was saying, I think that has to wait until we begin to get reading of the tea leaves with the number on the table and, and real conversations coming. And it may be that we have to.
So we, we're going to be deciding on this before we have a sense of what kind of appetite the towns.
No, no, we're, we're deciding now that it's time to make.
That we need the money, that we need to do these things. That's all we're deciding.
We're, we're in a cycle now where every year, it's the year the project needs to get done. If it was prudent to put, if it was, if it was considered prudent to push it off a year, we would have already, we've already pushed a ton of things out. So this is really on the get it done now before it starts to break or before it starts to sheer rate.
I understand that, I understand that, I was just trying to understand the sequence of.
Our process is, we, here's what we need, we're going to go through the political process of building support for it. If we find that that's a hard road to hoe, we will reconsider how we do what we need to do. But at the moment, we're doing what we expect is the right way to do it. All right, and that was the motion, did someone second?
I did.
And by the way, I read Robert's Rules of Order, and they do suggest that we record the person who makes the motion, not important to record whose name is.
Darn, there goes my name in all the minutes.
Mr. Robinson moved, and it was seconded, yeah. Discussion on the motion, and then we'll ask for a discussion.
Yeah, I would say I feel really good about who's on the Subcommittee with Dana and Michael and Chris and Ralph Kelly. So I feel really, really good about how they've been vetting this. Could we just get an update, the 21 items, whatever your latest sheet is, that would be great.
It's in the back of your notebook, in section five, the second page, third page in, sorry.
I was reading my packet, not.
And then includes the items that are in red, we had gone back and sharpened the pencils to make sure that the, the numbers, the numbers are different than what was originally onsite insight because costs have gone up on flooring. And Mr. Kelly got an estimate on that, and Michael was able to work that into the numbers to reflect a more accurate amount.
Or the project moved into this year.
Or moved into 2015.
For various reasons.
I'm going to, well, you can finish, ask any comments from the audience on this?
Just to repeat, none of this is in the operating budget, none of it's correct.
Well, yes and no.
Well, no, none of these, not these 362s.
Well, you have a van.
No, the leases. No, the leases.
Oh, the leases, right.
So everything except the third item in red, which says passenger van.
Any other questions? Yeah, Mary.
I have a question. Are we going to give an explanation of exactly what these are?
Would you like one?
Yes. Sure. Yeah.
Just, you know, 47,000 for passenger van, I, you know, it's possibly quite a legitimate thing. I just have no idea why that's there.
It'll get, if you look down the last two columns, you'll get a sense of, it's only two words, but you'll know more or less which part of the campus and what category it is. So the high school gym locker, I mean, it'll give you at least a sense.
I'm assuming that those are the types of conversations that go on, at least with Sherburne Capital, if not, somebody at Dover.
I would recommend, especially given the size of the ASQ, that we actually do spend some time with a good line-by-line justification.
Absolutely. So you really know what an Oxy Media Tank mixer is?
Yeah.
Impressive. Yes, we do know. Hey, anything that says wastewater treatment facility.
We can do a bulk, bulk purchase of this and get the price down.
Anything else before we take it over, Mary?
Well, I have a particular question of tractors. I know Pine Hill is also asking for a tractor.
Correct.
And I'm just wondering, you know, instead of three tractors, if they're possible to use two tractors? Like, I mean, how is this?
And we need a trailer and another.
We need a trailer and someone.
I don't, I.
At Mary, yeah.
It's worth looking at, Mary. On that in particular, I doubt there's an economy there because you really would need a trailer, you really would need, and it's the same number of hours on the tractor plus the, you know, the back and forth on the road.
To go in that direction, I think you need to get the various CMD heads of the towns and route talking and, and I just felt that that was beyond our scope.
You have either Pine Hill paying for a regional traffic, I mean, then you get into different.
Well, we could split it if we came to that.
But there's also, I think there's also a reality of it's doing snow removal also. You can't remove snow at two different buildings at the same time. So.
I'm going to leave that question to you and negotiate, we don't need to.
The other issue, Mary, is that the issue, the tractor at Pine Hill is very much still in discussion. We're reviewing maintenance records on that particular tractor, so that is still a live item. Thank you.
Moving to a vote, are those in favor of the motion? Thank you very much. Okay, it is five minutes of eight. We're going to just zip right along here. Thank you very much. Two, Mr. Bush, superintendent of the board.
We had decided tonight, given the weightiness of the agenda, and in particular fiscal 15 budget, to not do a lock-through of all the items in our individual reports. That's myself and Chris, Karen, Scott, and John. But we're happy to answer if there's a question on any part of my report, I'm happy, before we go into the budget discussion.
Okay, members review for the next 10 seconds, and then ask a question if you have one. I don't have questions, Mr. Bush.
I don't think there's anything there that really, you know, we, we need to implement the fingerprinting background checks very soon. That will happen in all public school districts. That's sort of a pressing change, but.
And parents still just need queries, right? Is that the point?
Correct, that's right. This is applied, the fingerprinting applies to employees, paid employees.
Okay.
Thank you. So I'd really like to thank Chris, Karen, John Smith, Jerry, Scott Kellett, the whole administrative team for working very hard over the past few weeks in, and I think this is an important point to, to reference. We have three school districts, we have three operating budgets that we have to put together. That includes multiple trips and visits to different subcommittees and lots of different appointments and meetings. We're happy to do all of that, obviously, but, and I think the lateness of Thanksgiving this year has sort of hyper-compressed a lot of this. So really, to the business office, including Heidi Perkins, Leon, Wilkie and Perro. Heidi's with us this evening in the audience as well, and of course, Chris and Karen, thank you so much. I would draw your attention, and what I'd love to do is really do a walk-through, and this will take a few minutes, but I think it's critically important. We've put a lot of time into these discussion points, and it's how we began the budget presentation at Pine Hill as well. So they are, they're included in tab one.
Your preference is to walk all the way through.
My preference is to go through all of these bullets.
And then engage in discussion.
If that's okay. So the talking points. This proposed budget considered budget-building guidance provided by both Dover Warrant and Sherburne Advisory. Specifically, Sherburne Advisory sought a maximum 1.4% for a $90,907 increase on the operating budget and $80,479 in benefit cost increases for the region for a total of $171,386 in allowable fiscal 15 increases. In its September 26th correspondence, Dover Warrant requested a level service budget proposal from all departments for fiscal 15. Both member towns seek responsible and reasonable budgets, inclusive of general education and both in and out-of-district special education costs. This proposed budget reflects student migration from the elementary schools to Dover Sherburne Middle School, and assumes migration of expenses related to certain student cohorts to the middle school as well. Specifically, the allowable 1.4% or $97,521 in operating budget expense increases at Pine Hill, none of which were realized in the proposed fiscal 15 budget for Pine Hill, should logically flow to the region's fiscal 15 budget, given aggregate student population shifts as well as extenuating circumstances surrounding the special education student subgroup. This proposed budget demonstrates administration's appreciation for the fact that our two-member towns almost entirely fund our first-class school system via local individual property taxes, where both the base, the value of real estate, and the multiplier, the tax rate applied to the base, are legally constrained in terms of growth. This proposed budget is consistent with modestly decreasing enrollment at the middle school, with a decrease of 15 students next school year, and increasing enrollment at the high school with an increase of 42 students next year, and was built with significant collaboration between central office and building-based administrators. This proposed budget, reflecting an overall 3.78% or $809,566 increase over fiscal 14 regional budget, is responsibly constructed in that it provides level service against a landscape of increasing enrollment. This proposed budget reflects continuation of an earnest effort of returning out-of-district students to district. This strategy resulted in some $200,000 in special education costs that would have flowed to our two-member towns. This proposed budget further reflects our commitment to full inclusion in that some students are slated to remain in district next year at the region, and out-of-district costs for the student cohort would have been approximately $200,000 more than what was budgeted had that not been the case. This proposed budget reflects a creative redeployment of existing teachers at the high school in offering one new elective course, namely, social media, that will be offered both semesters, and one additional section of TV media offered both semesters. This proposed budget allows for an additional and much-needed Chinese floor at the high school. This proposed budget captures modest expansion of occupational therapy and related services to meet students' needs. This proposed budget reflects enrollment-motivated reductions at the middle school in the areas of foreign language by .4, English by .2, math by .2, and health by .2. This proposed budget reflects a reduction of the full-time library assistant for high school as well as the part-time library assistant at the middle school. This proposed budget includes a level service approach to computer technology acquisition and yet allows for the overdue replacement of the foreign language labs housed at both the middle school and high school. This proposed budget includes a 7% healthcare increase, a 15% increase for Norfolk County retirement, a 2% increase for healthcare plan changes, and a 0.75% FICA increase. This proposed budget reflects the student bus transportation contract increase as well as an estimated monthly fuel charge averaging about $1,700 at the region per month. This proposed budget assumes $500,000 use of E&amp;D for fiscal 14. As of June 30th, 2013, the region's E&amp;D was certified at 3.69%, predicated on $750,000 use of E&amp;D for fiscal 14. The fiscal 15 budgets prepared for the elementary schools, which maintain programmatic responsibility for out-of-district students, reflect $1,215,213 of related out-of-district costs for students ages 6 through 22 from Sherburne, and $1,936,799 for students ages 6 through 22 from Dover. These figures are gross of circuit breaker. That is, they do not take into consideration circuit breaker reimbursement estimated at 40%. This proposed budget assumes that the $89,000 in increased Chapter 70 funding and the $70,000 in increased Chapter 71 funding received in fiscal 14 remain static in fiscal 15. This proposed budget reflects overall expense reduction in the salary and legal fees lines of approximately $100,000 stemming from staff changes and resulting salary savings, as well as a decrease in legal fees as the wastewater treatment facility litigation ended. This proposed budget provides $18,000 for the acquisition of a new handicapped accessible van needed in FY15 for student transport. Alternatively, the region would have realized an annual $27,000 contractor transportation charge had we had to contract for that service. This proposed budget includes facilities funding sufficient to allow for continued outsourcing of the operation of the wastewater treatment facility and reflects the new electricity rate and the increased use of electricity stemming from the installation of the air conditioning at the middle school. This proposed budget includes a 15% increase in general property and liability insurance coverage. This proposed budget does not include a placeholder for OPEB considerations. This proposed budget includes an undisclosed amount of money for contract negotiations spanning all bargaining units due to be negotiated this year, including teachers, administrative support staff, secretarial, food service, and plant and facilities. And in closing, we approach this budget-building exercise with an acute appreciation for the town's finances in full recognition of the need to provide level services in line with enrollment and with an overriding desire shared among all stakeholders to maintain a superior educational experience for all students. The administrative team has, through this proposed budget, put our best foot forward with the hope and expectation that we will be able to work through the budget process with relative ease over the next few months, thereby allowing us to attend to the lofty goals set by the superintendent and the administrative cabinet revolving around teaching and learning.
Thank you, this is actually, this is really helpful to hang together. How would you like to proceed?
We will take questions.
Lots to digest here all at once. Anybody want to start with anything in particular? I do have one question, and that is about the $200,000 you mentioned, especially the cost that would have flowed to the town. Tell me a little bit about that number, and is that, is that, is that an extra expense for us this year, or is, I mean, for FY15? Is it, is it directly, direct savings to the town? How firm are these numbers?
That was actually, those funds were saved in part in fiscal 14. We had students who returned to the region from out-of-district placements, students whose tuitions we would have been responsible for and would have flowed to the towns, and related transportation expenses that were also realized. So provided those students remain in district, those are monies that would not otherwise be, have to be allocated for next year.
And you've heard me say this before, but I think it's really important to, to say, and that is that if those, if those are real cost savings for our towns, our towns need to know it, need to know that we've saved them a bundle, to the best of your ability, exactly what that bundle is, and, and we should be able to use it as justification for increases over what our town guidance is saying. So as much as we can break that out and make it crystal clear, I think we'll be doing ourselves a big favor.
So one, to that point, one of the actions taken by the regional school committee this year, and we thank you for it, was the ability to hire a language-based specialist teacher. That's critical, and it's a beginning piece in a larger construct. A number of students exit our school system who have language-based learning deficits, learning-based issues, language-based issues. Having an infrastructure in place allows us, when students are either at the elementary and migrating and matriculating into the region, or potentially at the region, who would potentially have gone into a discussion around an out-of-district placement, it allows us to make a more cogent argument that we're able to meet those students' needs in district. And we have to be able to fortify that kind of a statement with an actual program, I mean, with resources that have been deployed. So we thank the regional school committee because we were allowed to do that this year, and what that did is allowed us to be able to say to folks who are in out-of-district placements, why don't you come back to the district, why don't you come back to DS? We want students in the least restrictive environment providing a free and appropriate public education. And the more that we can look to do that, Mr. Robinson, the more we will look to do that. And it's not with a complete motivation of money savings, it's doing what's best for kids, and we'd like kids to be at DS.
That's excellent. What else? Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, on the page two.
Yes.
Where it talks about, towards the labyrinth of the page, this proposed budget assumes that the $89,000 in Chapter 70 and $70,000 from Chapter 71. So I'm just, I, I'm trying to apply that to the statement in Chris Taig's report. So, and see if we're talking about the same thing. So in your report, Chris, you said that for this current year, we got $158,000 more than we expected from the state. And then you said that if it's level funded, level funded for FY15, so level funded, including that amount, why did we get that, including that?
The budget last year was approved at a lower amount at the time than when we did Chapter 70, you know, and then regional transportation. So this is the 14 amount we're actually receiving, and we're making the assumption that will continue into FY15. So it's a, it's an increased revenue source for FY14 as well as FY15.
Okay, so, so, so I understand that. So then, thank you. So then, that's what you're referring to in this line item, in this one that Steve just explained? Because the dollars aren't exactly the same, but that's what you're, that's what you're referring to.
So the, the political reasons why that happened, we're comfortable, won't change, and we won't lose that.
In as much as we're sure of anything.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, do we know, goes to the question, do we know why we got that increase? I know that the, the governor had proposed a much more significant increase to, I think it was regional school districts.
Right.
That did not materialize.
That's correct. This was the compromise, I compromised between the House one budget and the Western Senate and the House budget. The revenues for the state right now are currently running ahead, well ahead. So we don't anticipate the number going down.
But much like when we built fiscal, you'll recall, a year ago, when, or thereabouts, when the governor's budget came out, I mean, the region, had his budget gone through, the region would have realized to the tune of about a half a million dollars more. And thankfully, we did not build responsibly, this, this body did not build a budget predicated on that rosy picture, which wound up not being the case.
Well, do they ever look at the governor's budget, is that a question?
I have two questions. My first question, and I just have trouble, you can explain this for, so.
I'd like.
So, but I want to understand the out-of-district piece that's sort of in the middle of the page that.
You're on page two, Lauren, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm on page two, about the, the FY15 budgets for the elementary, for the two elementary schools, and the out-of-district costs to each of those, and how that impacts us. I mean, in particular, can I just?
Yeah, of course.
The reason why I'm asking this is, and I don't know if this is right, but I was recently told that when kids, although it's true that each town is responsible. that each town is responsible for their share of the out-of-district costs, that something kind of funny happens. And I don't know if this is true. This is something that I was told like two weeks ago, that the, because the numbers of kids or the decision-making about who's going to be serviced best out of district is made at the elementary school, and those kids don't come back very often or can't come back. I was told, and as I said, I don't understand this, that once they hit the district, instead of being decided on by the number of individuals from each town, the split is what, so whatever the split is, is how that's. No?
No.
Okay.
So the reason we actually pulled this out was to, I guess, raise awareness that it's an interesting arrangement. Because if you look at Pine Hill's budget and Chickering's budget, there are expenses for, how do we put? For regional aged students, that is to say, students in, you know, grade, you know, it really is.
Till 21.
Grade six through age 22 is really what it should read. And it's interesting in that those costs are embedded in each elementary school's budget, and yet the students are an age where they'd really be regional. I mean, had, you know, those students. So we felt it really important to just raise a little bit of fluency around that, you know, at each of the school committees to say, you know, that these expenses related to out-of-district place students from each member town that are of a regional age are actually costs that are borne by the towns in the construct of the elementary school's budgets, and yet the region, they're really regional-aged students.
So should that read grade six to 22?
It should.
Okay, because an age-six child is, this was where I was confused.
Yep.
So the cost to each town is based on, it's a one-to-one kid to?
Yes, for out-of-district, correct.
And that's per the? I know that in district, it's different. In district, it goes into the split.
That's right. And per the regional agreement, this is, it's specified in the regional agreement.
Right. The reason why I ask is because the out-of-district nut is so much bigger.
Yes.
And do we see, is it working out well? Do we see a trend that we may be able to include more kids as we get better at it?
Absolutely. And it's happening. We have an incredibly aggressive inclusion model in both of our elementary schools. And each year, we're seeing more students who are being included and will matriculate into our middle school, and that's fantastic.
And it's working well at the middle school and the high school.
It's work, it's a work in progress, and it is, it's working.
That's great.
Yeah, it's, and it's a credit to our, we have three specialized directors who are incredibly cohesive in their communication. And so there's a lot of awareness around students that are coming up, and what do we do to meet their needs?
And we had kids come back into district this year at the region. That's great.
Steve, I had a question about the reductions in foreign language, English. So it's point two. So is that, so one person's full-time job will now be less than full-time? Or you could split it over two people?
Could. So what happened is some of the reductions are motivated by an ability to, we have some capacity at the middle school, so we're able to bring a position down by, say, 20%. And what we then have to look at is how that affects the region's teachers, because we then have to look at either, it's either driven by the teacher's performance, which our contract allows us to look at teacher performance as the first criteria around reduction. And if there's no discernible difference in performance among teachers who are duly qualified and certified to fill that function, you go immediately, by state law, you go immediately to those teachers without professional teacher status first, non-tenured teachers. So what we'll see next year, barring a change here, is an increased sharing of personnel between the middle school and the high school. So we'll have more people, and that's raised a lot of discussion between Mr. Smith and Mr. Kellet about how does that work mechanically with schedules? Because this is the beginning of what we see as a trend. As enrollments over in future years, as we do share more personnel between the buildings, we need to have the malleability to do that in order to best utilize human resources.
So there's no unemployment cost because no one's being laid off?
No, there are riffs. There are reductions.
So when it says point two, that could be, are those sections?
So the 20%, is it 20% of someone who teaches English ultimately? And where the domino falls is predicated on performance or on tenure, on professional status. So ultimately, an individual will be reduced by 20% because it was a domino effect precipitated by an ability to do that at the middle school while maintaining level service. So the foreign language, for instance, we have foreign language teachers at the middle school. When everyone's scheduled next year and all the sections are running, we have teachers with incomplete schedules. And those incomplete schedules triggered the decision administratively to say, we have to scale this back. We have a fiscal responsibility to do that.
But we're laying off, but we're reducing the amount of hours they're working, but we're not laying anybody off.
People will be laid off by 20%. No one, no one.
Okay, I'm sorry. So maybe my language, laid off means there's no longer.
Sure, there's a position.
First patient at two. So if you're reducing their position by 20%, they don't have any unemployment.
Yes, they will.
They will.
They could, yeah.
Not, not like if we did the 1.0, but they are entitled to collect for the fraction.
No, that I didn't know. Okay, all right.
So in the aggregate, it's 40%, 20%, 20%. It winds up being a 1.0, you know, constructed over multiple. So if we could, if we can take a peek.
So since we're on this discussion then, right now, it anticipates zero retirements? And does that change what the schedule might look like in the case of somebody retiring, announcing that?
It becomes very discipline-specific. So definitely, if, if one of the area of foreign language, for instance, if a foreign language teacher were to say by January, I'm retiring, then it changes the construct a bit. So, you know, and we have, very, it's, this is the product of a month and more of tough discussions because these are people's lives, and we have a first-class educational system we're looking to preserve and protect. But it's also really difficult when we simply can't, we can't fill someone's teaching schedule. And it's happening, we're very routinized around that at the elementary level with our significant reductions taking place. I would, well, maybe not significant, but fairly regular reductions at this point.
As classroom capacity.
Did you want to walk through? Because I would love it if you just could walk through the page.
Tap two.
Tap two, page one.
Tap two, page one. So the title of the page, Summary of Staffing Changes FY15 Budget Implications. So the math reduction, and the math reduction, the health reduction, the Chinese position, the addition of the Chinese position are all detailed herein. So the health, 20% of the health position at the middle school, and that what we tried to do in the explanation section is to detail what we anticipate happening as a result of that. So with the health position, the 20% reduction at the middle school causes potentially someone at the middle school who's in a health position to enact his or her bumping rights and to then bump someone with less seniority at the high school. So ultimately, 20% of a teacher, barring an issue of performance, would be 20% of a teacher, least senior teacher, would be reduced. In the area of math, to jump up in one placeholder, I'm sorry, jumped over that. So we have a 20% capacity at the middle school. So Mr. Kellet advanced a 20% reduction in the area of math. Concurrent with that, after discussions with Mr. Smith, at the high school, the person who handles the scheduling of the high school has taught one less class in her teaching load. That will change next year because Mr. Smith's vision is that the assistant headmaster will handle scheduling. As a result, the person who had one less math class goes back into teaching math for that section. And so therefore, it's a conjoining of a 20% math position in both buildings. The result is a reduction of 0.4, or 40% of either a performance-driven math decision or a seniority-driven math decision. Chinese, you'll notice, is a 20% addition. That's for the addition of Chinese four, which was suggested by administration and multiple bodies. The high school and middle school library assistant.
One clarification. So that individual who teaches Chinese one, two, and three is a 0.8 person?
Correct.
So they're moving from 0.8 to one?
That's correct.
So it's benefit neutral, et cetera. It's just compensation.
Correct. The high school library aide is a, there's a full-time library aide at the high school. So that reduction is $31,474. And down below, if you look below, middle school library aide is a reduction. That person's a 0.5. That's a $13,375 budget savings. The area in the middle school, we talked about the foreign language at 40%.
Excuse me one. Middle school library aide says minus 0.05.
It's a 0.5. It's a part-time personnel.
But it's not 0.05.
It's 0.5. That'd be a real fraction.
Really, really.
Take your hours off on Monday morning.
It's a hell of a good salary, too.
Hey, can I get that job?
No, I'm applying for that. The English position, 20% of the English position at the middle school, again, is a capacity issue. And the music, we literally have taken into consideration what we anticipate being a long-term leave of absence next year. And this is the kind of very forward thinking that we've put into this budget. So we know we have a teacher of music who it may very well be out all next year, potentially, on a medical leave. It would have been very, it would have been egregious of us to advance a budget, knowing that, but not with confirmation around that, not to make appropriate financial considerations around the need to bring someone who's a music teacher currently at the middle school who's half-time, bring that person up to full-time, and then bring in a half-time complement to be able to meet all the sections of music at the middle school.
So the bottom line for music is there's not a change in program?
Correct.
Right.
Either, in either.
And the addition of a middle school special ed teacher, and that's a placeholder there for $65,000. We have a need next year for a severe special needs special educator. And so that is a position we must fill.
I was hopeful that that was going to be so that we could bring more kids into district. Not so. Is that going to be a one-on-one?
To be able to keep students in district. It's a catalyst to that equation.
And this is why this extraordinary amount of money to do that, presumably, that's less than it would cost.
That's correct.
It's true. Does that position also bring skills that enhances the special ed program as a whole? Or is it fairly limited?
Oh, potentially. It's definitely a new angle to our special ed delivery.
But this isn't because of a growing number of kids? This is a, this is a, this is a sort of a unique situation?
It's a student cohort, that's all I can say.
It's to service a particular need. It's not general.
Serves a need, yes. So the net effect of all the personnel in, the net effect is an overall increase of $28,864 with a lot of sort of gyrations there in between within the budget. But other questions on that?
And then retirements to be factored in. When if we ever find. Anything first from other committee members?
Just one last question. So do we have a sense of where E and D will fall if we use 500,000? Is that on the sheet those given today?
Yes.
The tab three?
Well, if you can call from my financial reports, we have a vote, I believe, 786 is the certified number. You're back out five, we're at 286. We know we have 151, assuming all other revenue comes in.
If you're looking for this, the bullet point is the middle of page two.
Oh.
Please go ahead.
So if we do receive, and we are receiving an additional state aid in FY14, there's 151,000 that's going to fall out to E and D. We've already identified, if that continues to go, another 125 to 140 in salary balance. And I know there's usually within a hundred to 200,000 in other expenditure variances. So I know we can, at least for another year, and still have a healthy E and D balance at the end of FY14.
So it's really going from the 750,000 we put in essentially as a placeholder for FY14? That's already out of our E and D?
That's correct.
And so we're adding back in the known favorable variance for the year that we're in right now?
And typically, after the holidays, we will begin to, I mean, we always are closely monitoring POs that are in the system, but we really will begin to question after the holidays, you know, if there's a particular large purchase that comes through, you know, we made it through half the year without that purchase. Do we really need that particular item with a keen eye on the ability to feed into our E and D equation for purposes? And we didn't mean to presuppose, we just wanted to put a package out, not at all being disrespectful to the regional school committee to say, if the regional school committee decides you don't want to use any E and D, that's, we can go back and crunch numbers. But we felt it important to put a realistic picture out. And this is very early.
No, I'm curious on the personnel thing. I see a reduction of 85,000 on the guidance line. Sort of curious, wasn't there an issue putting the guidance person back in last year? Where is this?
Right.
Just before you end, could you just direct us to the page?
Lanny's in tab one.
Tab one, Lanny?
Two.
Tab two.
In the big.
The big pages.
Pictures in the pages.
Yeah, the page numbers are in the.
The centerfold.
What page number?
You pull it out, very bottom.
Page six.
Thank you.
Page six.
Guidance salaries.
Thank you.
So when up, when we added the points.
Onto you, Chris.
That is basically as a result of, we did the increase to the high school guidance position, the point six. However, we had such movement in retirements However, we had such movement in retirements that we had not budgeted because they were done after the budget was approved. The replacement of those guidance counselors are generating an $85,000 savings.
So Lanny, to that point, we had two very seasoned, ultimately two very seasoned middle, seasoned, middle school guidance counselors. There was a shift there. We had a seasoned director of guidance at the region who retired. A net effect of about three different transactions is a savings to the salary line of $45,000.
Personnel.
It is. It absolutely is. It's a couple of very senior retirements.
So at the end of last year, we opted to fill the head of guidance as an interim.
Correct.
Okay. Has that changed, or is that search process being convened, or how does that play into this budget?
Over the next few weeks, it's my intent to sit with the two headmasters and with Karen and to review that. But I would say it's fairly safe to say that the person who's in the position is very much interested in the position and is doing a fine job. And so we would expect to bring forward some form of action to the regional school committee around that in the coming weeks.
So then that gives us absolute clarity of our salary situation for next year.
Exactly. I would not anticipate movement there.
It's actually in here.
Because I wasn't sure how you ever filled backfill.
No, it's in here.
Her role.
No, it's in here.
Spectacular. Anything else here?
The others.
So Chris.
Well, I see it's under whatever WWT contract it is. The contract increase on the chemicals of $18,600 is on page seven. But it says the contract increase from 3300 to 3400 for a month, which of course would be just $1,200. I'm not sure whether the $18,600 comes from.
What that is, mid-year last, in this fiscal year, the school committee voted to change from an internal operator for the wastewater treatment facility to a private company because we were not meeting permit at the time. We bid the, we did bid the contract, and that was the actual cost of an operator from a private company. So that's actually what we're paying today, the 3300. That contract is a three-year contract, and the price increase for FY15 goes from 3300 to 3400. So that's part of the delta for the increase in the contract that we're already paying in FY14.
But the $18,600 is for the total contract, it's not for the $100?
No.
And Lanny, having contracted the company with whom we contracted, the company Weston and Sampson, we are continually meeting permit on the wastewater treatment salary, which is critically important to our operation.
Okay. Since we're in that section?
Yeah.
Does it make sense to talk about the van?
Absolutely.
As it relates to capital?
Sure.
Yes, that'd be great.
So there, we have a placeholder for page.
Seven.
And it's in the royal blue section, Dover Sherborne. And it's read the line, reads buildings and grounds equipment, and it's a placeholder for a dollar change of $18,000. That is the lease payment for the handicapped accessible van, which is needed.
This is a new.
That would replace the 47,000 in the capital.
Is that a capital or an operating?
It would be an operating.
Be an operating, but we have other leases in the same area.
And at 47,000, it sounds like that's about roughly three years.
Yes.
But then year four, we would still need to do an 18,000.
Yes.
You're saying that if we don't purchase, but instead we continue?
We're the philosophical buy versus lease argument that every family goes through.
But I think Mike was looking at what happens in year four. And the need is to re-up the lease.
Okay, so whereas we could purchase.
For 47,000.
For 47,000, a van that might have a six-year.
Ten-year.
Okay.
So how is it that you opted to go to put a lease in here as opposed to keeping it on the capital list?
So you'll see, we put it both places.
Do you have a recommendation?
Well, anytime, thanks. Anytime you can pay cash, it's obviously better. However, the lease payments, when you're a regional school district, you do get a reduced rate. It's not as cheap as a bond anticipation or a long-term bond, but there's a very small incremental cost difference. So if the towns decide to not do the capital project, which includes the van, we have the opportunity to do it at a minimal cost differential and save a substantial amount of money.
And it's safe to say, safe to say that this really needs, and it wasn't to sort of bypass the capital committee, it's critical that we have this. And our fear when we were building the budget was that if this does not make it through a capital scenario, it's a non-negotiable. It's got to be.
And is that traveling from homes to the region, or is it going to out-of-district placements?
School, it would travel from homes to the region.
To the region. So the mileage would be really low.
And I'm not uncomfortable having it in two different places, as long as we all recognize that it's in two different places. But the consequence is that if, or the, important to understand that if the towns look favorably on our capital funding request, our operating budget should be reduced by $18,000, not only this year, but every year going forward. Whereas if they don't look favorably on it, then over the life of a van that we could purchase, we would instead be paying on the order of eight times $18,000, right?
Correct.
Or until the need dissipates.
Or what?
Until the need dissipates.
Until the need dissipates. That's an important point, I suppose, isn't it? Because it could be that we would only need it for a few years.
Could be.
All right. It's just important to keep that in mind as we talk. Anything else? And then Joan, I'll get to you in just one second. Anything else here at the table? Joan, first.
On the benefit side, there's some increases there. The, the, Norfolk County, that's just a number that the school district gets from the retirement board in sometime early in the January, February. So we can all kind of groan about that, but there really isn't much to be done about that. On the healthcare benefits, there was a pretty big bump. Is there more information that you get over the next few months which allows you to refine that now? I think it's about $246,000 increase, or is that kind of the number that you're going to go with? Do you get more information from the participants as to their intentions?
That actually is a rate that's set by West Suburban, which is the group we belong to. They set their rates typically at the end of January. As a result, that could be refined, but from what we're hearing, it looks like it's going to be anywhere between 5% to 7%.
That's increasing, but it's also impacted by changes in status and other things. You make some assumptions in that. Are those assumptions based upon the experience you've had over the last few years?
This last year, we budgeted nine placeholders for those changes, and we actually experienced 15. So if anything, we may have to look at that and bring it up, I think, depending upon the number of retirements next year.
So are families not rolling off family plans now because they have kids that can stay on till age 26? Is that kind of what's happening? It's not that we have new people opting in for families, we're just not shedding them as quickly?
And we have spouses that have qualifying events in their lives, changes in employment, et cetera. It is pretty phenomenal here in terms of migration around plans for us. I mean, unprecedented.
Yeah, it was.
In the past five years.
So the 2% increase that you have estimated for plan changes, is that 15 plan changes?
Nine plans.
Or nine?
Nine plans.
It's nine.
I saw a hand back there. Mary? Was it Mary? Sorry.
Mary, do you have a question?
Yes, I actually have two questions. One, I just want to be clear that there are no other expenses like the van that are showing up in two places.
No, that's correct. And that's an, Mary, I don't want it to seem sort of deceitful. It's really, it's an extenuating.
I agree. I just wanted to.
Thank you, Mary.
My point.
I believe you too.
And the other question is, when there were a lot of retirements, that ups the benefit cost because you're paying for the retiree and you're paying for the replacement in the income's in to take their place. And is that significant? I mean, should, we be encouraging people to stay longer? Or is that not an option?
Depends if you're looking. Does it really have the salary matrix?
I know.
Yeah, yeah. And I think the net effect, Mary, you're absolutely right, because you sort of take a hit a little bit on the healthcare side, right? But the hope is that you realize savings on the salary line, which we have, as you can see in Lanny's point about the guidance.
So it wasn't a bullet point, but did I understand you've got someone up there who say that there are no retirements planned or assumed at the moment?
We don't really have any assumed. I mean, there's some level of discussion, but we don't have anybody who's willing to say, signing my name to a document. So really tricky to build that in. We don't want to build that in. So the hope is we'll be able to come back to this body and say, good news. You know, there's whatever X number of retirements, but no one, nothing has come forward yet in a confirmed way.
And what's the date for people that want to get the benefit? Is it January?
January.
So you might know that by the next meeting.
And we have the internal.
February 1.
It's February 1. That was the last day in January, first day. And the headmasters are actively engaged and conversate, they've been incredibly proactive in discussions with personnel about, you know, is anyone think, we had given all headmasters in all of our four schools at each campus the green light to say, feel free, in a faculty meeting, in a global way, to say, you know, if there's anything the central office can do to help you in terms of figuring out what your retirement would look like, et cetera, no commitment, just please let us know, because that way payroll can do some of the number crunching. It helps everyone, because we think it's the right thing else to do by our employees, so they know what things look like.
Okay, anything else on the budget at this point?
Just one final thing. I don't know if this is inappropriate, but it kind of comes out of, you know, this question about the guidance and your, is it totally inappropriate for a school system to offer a incentive for folks to retire? I mean, you guys know the number better than I do.
Some school districts have that in a contract. You know, there's, sometimes you can look around and see that in contract, and we're in negotiations now.
All right, anything else? This obviously is our first look, first pass of discussion. We're going to have another meeting at the beginning of January to, let's say, talk about the budget. And then typically, we like to have a budget-focused meeting sometime at the end of Jan, sometime in the middle of January. I don't remember where we ended up in our informal discussion about that, whether that might be premature at that point, based on the ongoing contract negotiations. I'm not sure we had much to say at that meeting.
I think we, if it's okay, we'll keep our regular January meeting. If it's okay with the committee, and we'll have a placeholder for any updates that administration can bring forward, and we'll take it from there. Are you okay?
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine. But as far as a separate meeting goes, it doesn't seem, it seems though January 15th or 20th or something would be premature for a budget-focused meeting, because we're still not going to know.
That's right.
The outcome of the contract.
We have a joint meeting in January.
We do.
We have a joint meeting in January.
And I think the other part is that administration has really tried to bring forward a budget that's very detailed.
This is extraordinary amount of progress before.
Before the holidays.
Yeah, exactly. So as school committee, do keep in mind, we may be looking at an extra meeting in February if we need it, in order, one would hope by that point, we actually have a contract to talk about.
I noticed in the Dover warrant that there is a meeting on February 13th that says it's a joint meeting with Sherborne Advisory. Is that accurate?
Well, it's accurate that you read that. But we don't have, you know, it's driven off of, you know, something you're talking about.
Right, and we want to make sure that we leave time in our deliberation process for a joint meeting with you guys after we've had a chance to give it our best shot.
But would it make sense to pencil it in since it's something that's already been put in black and white as a maybe?
It's a placeholder.
As placeholder, since it's already a placeholder for Dover.
Is Sherborne has it as a placeholder all the way?
Thursday, February.
We'll do it offline. We don't get something. Okay. All right, we're going to move on from the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you, headmasters and Jerry.
Do you guys anticipate any other warrant articles we need to come forward this year aside from the capital budget one? In the past, we've had other things. I'm just, I want to put the question out there.
No, really, we try to embed our technology needs in the construct of the operating budget.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to go on to discussion of the extra compensatory committee recommendations. And my head is spinning on this entirely. I have no idea what the status quo is at the moment. Please, Mr. Chris, enlighten us on.
Annually, this is, and the folks that have been on the regional school committee, look around the table, everyone, will acknowledge that annually, the extra compensatory council is required to meet. And what typically happens at that meeting is that people in the school system who are advising different clubs or activities put a lot of time and effort into substantiating a claim as to why they think that the particular club or activity that they're working with, that that warrants a stipend. Our extra compensatory system operates on a ratio system, so everything has a 1.0, 2.0, 3.0, or some increment thereof. The ratio, each ratio point is valued, dollar, well monetarily, at $1,396.02. It's important to note that that rate has not changed. It was that rate last contract, it's that rate this contract. And so people around the school system very thoughtfully and respectfully bring forward proposals. We have an entire council of folks that give up an afternoon. They come together, they need, they hash everything out, and they make recommendations for the regional school committee. We spent a lot of time at the meeting on the afternoon of November 26th explaining that we're in a really, the regional school committee is annually in a very tough spot because this literally hits every year at a time when I feel, and the actions, or lack thereof, not because of not a desire to do anything, I think the regional school committee sort of feels annually like, what can we really do around this? We're facing huge budget deficits, and it sort of is in limbo land. Cheryl Ingersoll, my administrative assistant, is working on a historical landscape for the regional school committee. It's going to look at every extra compensatory position and what movement or requests have been made around that, which is very nice to be able to show that, because one of the things we hear from the regional school committee members is, you know, it's really tough because we really would like to act on this, but then we feel like we're paying short shrift to the other positions that were brought forward last year. So that this faculty council got together on the 26th, had a great conversation and said, we have a teacher contract that's terming out June 30th of this year. This is the end of a teacher contract. We're in negotiations. We don't know what will happen with negotiations, if there'll be any movement around extra compensatory at all. So this council became very creative in saying, let's go through this thoughtfully and figure out what we think is worth what we think it's worth, given all of the different recommendations put forward. Are there any alternative and creative funding sources for any of these positions? So two positions were recommended to go into grant mode. One was recommended to go to the boosters, another was recommended to go forward to, actually two others, to DSCF, for potential grant review. It yielded the list that appears before you. We then did start discussing money, came together, Karen, myself, Chris, we sat down, consulted with the council, and thought, how could we, if it was the will of the regional school committee, for this year, for these positions, understanding there'd be no carryover of this, understanding the contract terms out in June, but in recognition of an interesting variety of activities that we think are filling the needs of a lot of kids here, how can we creatively fund this in a budget-neutral environment for the regional school committee to consider?
I'm going to stop you there, just to make the following point, is that everything you said obviously is true and appreciated and applies every year. And we have this discussion about activities for the following year.
Yep.
Your last paragraph, it's important to recognize, is asking us to make a decision about activities for the current fiscal year, and that we've never, ever, ever done.
That's correct.
Okay, I just, I want to make sure that's clear, because this discussion, as complicated as it is every year, suddenly is now three-dimensional. Go ahead.
And we think it's pretty novel.
It is novel, I'll give you that.
Because it's, you know, it's recognizing, this is a conundrum we face annually. I think there's been a fair amount of discussion on extra compensatory, what are the clubs and activities, how are they formed, how can we apportion them differently, who handles it, how can administrators potentially have a little more flexibility over that, how do we do a survey around what kids really want for clubs and activities? We're developing that now, so that we really take, we just want to collect data around are there clubs and activities we're not offering? Are there clubs and activities that parents think we should offer that maybe we're not offering? There's clubs and activities teachers think we should offer that we're not offering. So we're doing all of that in the background, but when we looked at these, we thought, they made a very compelling case around a lot of these clubs and activities. And how could we recognize these for this year with the full understanding, we couldn't introduce new spending, because we don't have the funds to do that existing in fiscal 14? And how could we do it and do what's right by kids, by the advisors, with full recognition that this could just term out on June 30th?
Okay, and then let me just say one more time. What? That what, what the extra compensatory council generated was a list for next year, am I right? List of recommendations for next year.
Right, and then a council as a body said, you know what, we understand everything you're saying about the contract, we understand the process, we understand where the regional school committee is, could we look at something for the current year?
That's fine. So, so this list, whatever it's, 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 whatever action we take or don't take on, on this list for this year is in fact also a request for next year. This is the request.
That's right, there's no, this group fully understands that all bets are kind of off and that there's, I think there's an implicit understanding that something may happen around extra compensatory, whether it's around the process or the money or whatever. So everything's kind of a--
So they have not submitted a request for next year?
This, they fully understand that if this were approved, it, it's for this year only.
But, but to Richard's point, so there's no subsequent document for next year's request?
Probably because they've given up.
There's a little bit of frustration. I'm not, I'm not in shock with that. I'm, I'm a little bit wary just because there is some deadline associated with when that's supposed to be submitted. I, I'm fully willing to waive that requirement. Okay, good. So we're just talking about this year, we just talked about this list.
Okay, I am, my head is spinning about this because this is like something that I truly don't understand. This is just a piece of what we're already doing, correct? This is a request beyond, we have all kinds of clubs and stuff going on and it's being paid out, okay. And so this is, this is to supplement that.
It also, but it also might be, it also might be to pay someone who's already doing it out of the goodness of their heart and not getting paid.
Actually, I know.
So it's to reflect the reality of the current school year.
I, 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 right. Now, okay, I've been bringing this up like for a long time now and I brought it up at the last meeting. And essentially, there are some things that are going to be set in stone, some positions, some stipended positions that are going to be set in stone, and then there are these which aren't. And that there is no, I mean, I know that you're, you're trying to figure out, you're surveying and so forth, but in the meantime, when I tried to try to, when I suggested that this should be, that the whole thing should be under the same umbrella, that the educators ought to be making decisions about what's in the best interest of kids, what would be integrate well in terms of the curriculum, what is important for kids to have independent of enrollment. I was told, oh, no, 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 we can't have that conversation because that is a contract negotiation. Well, yeah, but, but effectively I'm being told that, that some of it is and some of it isn't and that, because this isn't, this is outside of that.
Let me say, you're not being told anything. This is now being brought before.
No, I understand that, but I have, I have a bigger problem.
Hold on a second. The first question is, on, on the discussion of this is, can we do it? And I haven't been convinced that we can do it. So I, I don't want to presuppose that these are special somehow and have been, have been put into a separate bucket. I'm not sure they can be put into a separate bucket and that to me is the first question. There may be larger questions about how the extracurricular program is run, which you, you, you know.
Yeah, I was horrified by, by what I heard last week when I asked the question and then this came through.
Okay, so, so, I mean, I, I don't, I don't want to interrupt, I don't want to prevent you from saying whatever you're going to say, but it's important for us to understand this, that we are on new ground here and it, it's not clear to me that we have any business on this ground. We'll get to that point in just a minute. So please.
But I think we have a broken system. I mean, I think that we have a broken system when it comes to, rather than putting aside a number of dollars and letting the, the people who know what they're doing make the decisions, we're getting this piecemeal, we're not educators, we don't really know what's in the best interest of the kids. But I think-- It's crazy.
And, and so it may be, and, and unfortunately at the moment, here we are. I, I don't want to entertain that much larger and important discussion. We've talked about it some, we don't seem to find a way to get traction on it. I'm, I'm looking forward to some of the things you're talking about.
Yeah, and there's a fair amount, Lauren, to your point, I mean, to, you know, it's, there's frustration all around, around extracurricular, from the school committee to the teachers that put forward this every year and nothing happens with it, yada, yada, yada. So I think this full acknowledgement that the, the process is flawed and it's not flawed because administration's executing it inappropriately or that the teachers, so I, I want to just qualify.
No, I, I'm not blaming anybody. All I'm saying is that I think the whole thing is just so ass backwards, I don't know where to begin.
Right. So we are going to talk about this, but go ahead.
Where we're stuck is the place where this possibly could be getting fixed is under a tone of silence and we're not getting any reporting back and I just don't, I, I would, I need to know, is it even on their agenda? I don't think that's an inappropriate request of information out of the negotiating process.
I don't, I don't know.
Well, it was one of the issues that the school committees asked to bring forward.
Correct.
Yeah, it's, it's a one-way filter. We have no idea. We, we brought a ton of things forward.
I don't have a--
I mean, it just seems reasonable to say, yes, we are working on that or no, we've made the choice somewhere along the line even before we even got into the room or early on in the process, we prioritize some things around the table, some things are on.
I would like to answer that question too. I don't think we get it. I'm sorry to say, I just don't think we get it.
I, I don't understand the reason why we can't on something like that.
Because everything's up in the air.
Because even if it is being discussed, what information does that give you?
I think in the end--
It tells me it's being discussed versus if it got jumped and we're back to square one when this contract--
I'm going to let you speak just a second. We cannot at this point change the way the contract's going to be negotiated. It is frustrating, I feel it's frustrating. There's nothing unfortunately that could come out of that meeting regarding extracurricular requests that would mean anything to us substantially because until the agreement is finalized, everything's on the table. Right? So, and even if they say it's off the table now, it could go back on the table. So I, so unfortunately, we really do have to leave it there, but Dana, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay. I just think we have to separate fixing the long-term issue, which both of you are alluding to, and the, the interim step, which is how do we address the needs of the students in this year without committing to anything long-term? And I think that's what we're trying to do, right? We're trying to separate fixing it versus the stopgap of this year. And I think that's what we need to focus on for--
Let me play this one, one, one more way in terms of hypothetical. So a contract gets finished, signed off, voted, let's say it's March, will we, or February or whatever, will we revisit that topic then in light of what we've learned about the contract during this fiscal year or school year within this body?
I'm sorry, will we revisit it during?
Longer term, how do we make sense of it now that we know where we came out on the contract?
That might be--
I'm married to it for three years.
Yeah, so some things, Michael threw, and I'll use historically, so in the last contract that was negotiated, there were four or five topics that were discussed and from those, what were formed were the MOU committees. And the lifespan of a given MOU committee is not prescribed or presupposed. So if potentially, like the MOU evaluation subcommittee was in existence, kind of still is, but was in existence for 18, 20 months, something like that, because that's how long it took to get the body of work done. So I think it would be fiction a bit for us to say, you know, if there was some movement towards looking at extra compensatory in whatever venue, will that work be done by June 30th of this year? No, you know, no, it's, or, or would it spill into next year?
Are you, is it off the table? No, it's not off the table. Is there anything substantial that can be done that's going to depend entirely on what comes out of the contract and whether in fact there's a window that's opened in that--
So then maybe I'm getting more confused rather than less. Under the current contract, what is it about the contract that keeps us from approaching activities and planning around them in a more thoughtful way?
Because they're embedded in appendix, it's part of the body. They're within the four walls of the contract.
The compensation for any specific task, right?
Yes.
But just because it's designated doesn't mean it has to be offered, it just is if it's offered.
Right. That's how they got to this revenue neutral one.
Correct. So, so again, is the, is the bigger thing on the table than this construct of X number of units and it gets locked in? Is that the core of our issue or the fact that we don't prioritize the dollars within that scale that's predefined?
And then we really are going to talk about this.
I, I have no problem about the total number of dollars being negotiated as part of contract negotiation. My understanding is that the amount of money for each thing is, is negotiated, which means that the contract negotiation is driving what our kids are doing after school or what is being funded for our kids to do after school and I--
The, the amount of money for each thing is in fact is non-negotiable. We set it. Once we set it, then it's in the contract, then it's non-negotiable.
Right.
But, but the original decision is a decision at this table, not a decision in negotiations.
All I know is that certain clubs seem to go on year after year after year and others, we get piecemeal and, and there's no overriding principles whatsoever applied to it. It's not done, it's not done looking at all of the things and, and it seems to me that it's got to stop. It doesn't make sense.
So if something is three units, we could change it to two or we could change it to four?
No.
Okay, then that's different than what I just heard Richard say.
What I--
Once it's set and in the appendix, we cannot change it.
The number of units.
But we do enter it in, so for instance, today, we did increase middle school team leaders.
No, because this isn't changing it for next year and it's not going--
But I'm saying hypothetically.
Oh, hypothetically.
So this is new this year, but hypothetically, if we increase something, it goes in the market.
So the dollar amount, each ratio points were 1,396.02, that could not, that's non-negotiable once it's written into the contract. If something is worth 2.0 ratio points or then 2.5, that is doable. That's in fact what the faculty council, what this extra comp council has been brought forward to do. So you may run the XYZ club and it's been worth 2.0 ratio points, you were super psyched, you know, that was great for a while, but now you have 150 kids and yada, yada, and you want to bring something forward and you think that should be worth four ratio points? This is the vehicle to allow that.
Then we can change the units for any particular thing. If something's at three, it can go to two, if something's at two, it can go to four.
Yes. Units not--
I'm sorry.
It's the ratio, it's the B1 you can't change, that's the contract.
But the unit's worth.
Right.
Oh, okay, I'm interested then.
All right, so can I comment on the current situation?
Not yet, actually, because I want to say something first. Please, I want to say something first about this. Back to the new ground question. We're being asked to add funding for activities, whether they're going on or not is, is in some ways immaterial to, to whether we're allowed to do this, to add funding for activities that are going on this year, is that, that's right?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any contractual reason why we should not be able to do that since it is in fact, this is brand new?
I actually vetted this through Keith, my weekly meeting with Keith Kaplan and he thought that it was very innovative, especially where we were. He saw no union issue with this, understanding it terms out June 30th and thought it was very creative, given where we are in the landscape of a contract and frustration around extra comp and whatnot.
I, I, I question whether, I love the, the flexibility, I love the idea that this committee has that flexibility. It's not clearly why we should have that flexibility since were we to make exactly the same decision on say, the middle school fall drama for next year, it would not term out at the end of the year, right? It, it becomes set in stone.
Correct, correct. So the faculty council is a fairly empowered group, I mean, it's defined in the contract that the council will convene in the month of November, then will make a recommendation
The extra compensatory.
Extra compensatory, I'm sorry, yeah. Will make a recommendation to the regional school committee and given that we have so many variables at play right now, the idea was, we could either go through this exercise and say, we think, and we could literally say, the extra, and I'm in full faith and confidence saying, the extra compensatory council believes that these things should be funded. If the funding mechanism that they've tried to put forward, which is a budget neutral for the regional school committee, is not, we still feel confident saying these things were worth that and so we've done our charge, you know, in bringing forward this and trying to do it in a fiscally responsible way by saying, okay, there are a couple reclassify, we have a couple things that we could reclassify into a grant and then we have a couple positions that are not filled. The funding is there to allow us to, to allow you to do this. It's not new money.
Yeah, I know it's not new money.
It's also not new ID, it's not new cost either.
Lauren, we have a process, that process has, as, as much, whatever we may process, that process has done its job, which is to bring these recommendations, okay? That discussion has to be put off to another day while we discuss this. Yeah, sure.
It's not new money, but if there was an $11,000 gain, it would go into E and D, which will help us for next year. So I don't want to just feel that I just want to spend money because we have money. A lot of these are worthwhile, but there was a huge fight for the sailing team position and I see that's not on here, so--
Excuse me, Shelley, can I?
So it, it feels, well, can I, one more piece? And I would never change a team leader position for one year and then next year that same, because we know we're funding team leaders going back down in a ratio the following year, that just to me seems poorly thought out. So I, I would like to, you know, we've brought up ideas and we're in contract negotiations. I would say I don't, I don't choose to do anything this year because we're in the middle of contract, some things are contract issues and you're dipping in dollars for some of these middle school year positions. And I'd rather save the money and see where we're going to spend it.
Right, so, so one question, you've identified which is the important one is to whether spending the money at all, right? That's, that's the question, should we, should we spend on these particular things? I actually have a question which really comes, which precedes that. I, I don't know why I feel so entirely uncomfortable about this, but it seems to me as though that the, the straitjacket that we are in, in the normal process of approving extracurricular activities, we've suddenly decided, oh, we don't need that straitjacket anymore. And, and I could, I could easily imagine, I would love it if it were true, easily imagine that next year we say, you know, there's just not only eight things, but in fact 50 things that we could actually just decide on the fly.
However--
And we want to fund.
However--
I don't think we get to do it.
Well, and I, I appreciate the analogy because it's, you know, to the straitjacket, but I think that this, the faculty, the extra compensatory council, I think appreciated that there was some restriction. And if, if nothing else, a restriction by circumstance of the timeline annually, they, they really felt for the fact that, how could the regional school committee really appropriate $12,000 when you're looking at closing an $800,000 gap or whatever it is? And, and there was total, total acknowledgement around that level of straitjacket and position and that the process is flawed on multiple levels. So the idea was, so that we don't have another year where it simply gets backburnered kind of thing, could we provide the regional school committee with a fund? This is novel in its, in its identification of existing dollars. I don't, in my five years, I haven't seen that.
So, so you have to go back to that point that Shelley raised, I guess I have a different view. If, if this committee, which is made up by the people who execute these activities, say, we no longer think we need to spend it here and we'd rather spend it there, I think we support it. I think them saying we're no longer spending it here and then we take that money away, I mean, we budgeted for activities, that's what we should be doing and having people be thoughtful about the best way to spend it is something we want to reinforce, not, not grab budget.
I, I just want to reiterate that point and that is that we budgeted for this, to spend this money, this 68, 6989 was meant to be spent on extracurricular activities. The only question is which extracurricular activities and now we're being presented with a way to spend it on things that in fact are already happening that are deemed worthy by the process that is supposed to deem them worthy.
I, I just want to understand, how do new activities happen? Because it seems to me that, as always, the activities that I'm handed look good. The problem is how we've gotten there. I'm, I'm sure that, that, that the committee did an incredibly responsible job and I, I like the-- I'm sure that the committee did an incredibly responsible job, and I like the fact that we're doing things a little bit differently. God knows that's great. But my real question is, does this committee think in terms of what we need, or is this committee reactive? Because if this is a reactive committee, then we haven't changed as much as I'd like to.
Good point, Lauren. This group literally discussed the overriding need to survey multiple stakeholder groups to find out, do we have the right mix? I should have said that, Lauren, because to your point, there was absolute head nodding around the table, like, we need to really look at the mix of activities, because maybe it's not just great.
I've gotten emails from parents, I have to tell you, saying, why don't we offer-
XYZ.
Well, or as many, why don't we have as many clubs per kid as some other districts? Or why are our clubs tend to be more sports and performing arts related, and not other things? And it seems like when we do get something new, like robotics, which I think is great, and now we've got Quiz Bowl, and that's just dandy, and it looks like we're moving toward debate, and I think that's terrific. But it's because some kid or some faculty member has a bee in their bonnet and gets a thing going, rather than it coming from the top down. And that's the thing that's driving me crazy.
I think we agree with you, and I think it won't, it doesn't get solved tonight, but there's definitely acknowledgement that the process-
But every time we commit money to something that's existing, and something that's existing will always have bigger enrollments, and something that's brand new, we're taking, to some extent, we're taking, we're making a decision that we don't want new things.
Okay. The vacant extracurricular appointments, do you have any knowledge of those areas?
Yes, we had them the last time. It was energy-
Energy and the newspaper.
The newspaper's not filled right now.
That's what you said, energy and newspaper.
The others will be filled with their production assistant positions, so they may have been listed as vacant, Dana, but they will be-
So what's happening on the ministry of musical?
This vacant extracurricular total of almost $7,000 presumes that there are six, roughly six, ratio equivalents that aren't going to get filled this year. Five, sorry, five ratio equivalents that aren't going to get filled this year, right? One of them is this, is the energy dance thing, but we understand that we're signing off on those things that are not happening, even if there's a ground swell in February to offer-
Oh yeah, there'd be no, there's literally no mechanism to do that with a compensatory figure.
It was, the ones that are not being used are 1.0 of mock trial advisor, 1.5 of energy advisor, 2.0 of newspaper advisor, how much is that one? Two point, there's 4.5.
Oh, that's mock trial middle school.
Right, sorry, middle school. Middle school mock trial, and there was two of middle school student information assistant, two of high school musical corps, but that'll be filled one, as will musical orchestra.
Some of these have been-
Yeah, Dana, we need to go by this list.
Is newspaper middle school or high school?
High school.
So one last.
We have-
Sorry, that might be off date.
Again, and it's really my fault, spent way too much time on this. I'll take one more point from you, and then we're actually going to put this-
So the other portion of it is about $4,900 for an academic extra comp position, but when I look back, it seems to suggest that's not getting filled till next year.
Now, that's actually a position within that whole spreadsheet, Michael. We have department chair, you know, department chairs listed, curriculum supervisor listed. What we identified administratively was to say, we could literally take $4,877.17 worth of a combination of those, or of that position, and charge that off to a grant that we have that's still open, so as to free up the money to make the whole transaction work.
Because as a student information manager, it suggests it's not being refilled for next year.
Right.
But that has nothing really to do with this conversation.
Correct.
I just, I have to say one other thing, which is that I know, because the newspaper is one of the things, and I sort of know what's going on with that, because my kid's been involved in it. It is happening. There are faculty members involved. I don't know why or how it is that they didn't come and ask to be paid.
Yeah, I don't know.
But as long as they're not, it's not going to take off the way that some of these things have, and it strikes me, not as anything here is bad, but my own child came home and said, there's no money for paper, so it's going to be online.
We'll think that under advisement. John?
Thank you. Just a couple questions, and that is, have any of these, all of these are currently underway? Or just all the things that are on this list?
Everything that was here was the totality of what was presented to the faculty council.
Ultimate Frisbee, Chris, is happening now, or happening in the spring?
Fall and spring.
Fall and spring, okay. Fine. All right, I will make a motion, and Amy, I'm going to stumble through this one, which is to approve the extra compensatory council recommendations for the 2013-14 school year as presented, with the following provisos, that this funding is only for the 2014 school year. Approval of these is not to be understood to affect any extracurricular activity approvals for any future years.
Can you just make sure that says 2013?
2013, 14, thank you. Anything else we need to put on there?
I would add that the budget neutral phrase.
And that it remains budget neutral, as described in the memo attached to the recommendations.
Because these are stapled, I want to make sure I know what I'm signing off on. There's two items in the back, though.
They didn't get, they didn't recommend it.
That's not what it-
Yeah, it does, Michael. The ones on the very front is what they're recommending, just the AFS, so if you check mark, if you go through your list-
But this says extra compensatory council recommendation, it's blank on the special ed director.
Right, so they didn't, they said no.
Right, and the next one that says on the way to way advisor, should say that was actually deferred to DSC, to a booster grant.
Yeah, it's on the other, I saw that on the other page.
Is the special ed curriculum leader part of this, or not? Because that's not, okay, because that doesn't seem like extracurricular.
No, it's not on the front.
Yeah, no.
It's always put forward as brand new. It's just, it's confusing.
New position presented.
Right. Well, that was in the budget, though.
The team chair position was-
That's for next year.
This is for, they want a position that's equivalent to like a curriculum supervisor position, but have that for special education as well.
Okay, I mean, I don't get how that and the team leaders for, at the middle school, the changing of the stipend has anything to do with extracurriculars.
It's not, it's an extra, which is a difference. Sorry, I've been saying the wrong thing. And to make it real clear, that motion should have read, the extra compensatory council recommendations as outlined in the first page of the memorandum dated December 3rd, not anything that follows that, which is-
It's quite a motion.
Yeah, it really is. How are we doing, Amy? Do you have that?
Yeah.
Let's read it back before we get a second line.
Oh, it's not tight yet, I've got it.
All right, you have enough to give a movement. Is there a second?
No second.
You want me to read it, or not?
Oh yeah, if you have it, sure.
It's a motion to approve the extra compensatory council recommendations as outlined in the first page of the memo dated December 3rd, 2013, with the following provisions, and then I have bullet points.
Okay, that's fantastic. Any further discussion, anything from you?
Yeah, I think it's not a long-range plan. I applaud the creativity, but to offer the AFS student stipend for one year, and then it's gone next year, or to set a club up for ultimate frisbee and pay it, and then it's gone, it doesn't seem like a long-term plan.
It's not, and we are twisting our own arms here, and we should recognize that. It would be very, very difficult to come back and say, nope, not next year.
Or that middle school leaders are worth less next year.
There's no question that we're setting ourselves up.
The other thing goes to look at it as a flip side, which is that Chris is running the ultimate frisbee club without getting paid at all, and so this is at least a nod to the effort that he's making this year.
But somehow, Chris, and I really like-
Sorry to pick on you, Chris.
And I really like ultimate. I don't know where the sailing came in. So sailing, we also heard, to your point, that some things were on the radar, and then they're on-
We rely on the extra compensatory council. If in their wisdom, they entertained and did not bring forward a sailing recommendation, if in discouragement, the sailing folks gave up, I agree with you, it is unfortunate, and I really wish they would take the opportunity to try to fix that.
Who's right?
They, the extra compensatory committee, would try to take initiative to fix that, so that we don't have the very situation that we're talking about, the perfectly worthy things, just choosing the wrong year to be-
Or some body of people that's constituted for that charge.
Or some body of people constituted for that charge. But we have the recommendation, and we are paying attention to that recommendation, not inviting repercussions from outside that process. Okay, any questions, all those?
Can I just say that I feel like at a certain point, while I, and my kid does some of these things, and I know that they're great, at some point, if you, I feel like if you don't say no, something, it won't change, and nothing, although, what is the mechanism for new stuff? There isn't a good one.
No.
I mean, you can still-
Well, I mean, the way that's-
Let me push back, let me push back.
This is the mechanism for new stuff? We've got a bunch of new stuff here.
No, we don't.
Sure we do.
This is already existing. All of our stuff is already-
It's unexisting, but it's unpaid. All right, we're ready. All those in favor of the motion? We got three. All opposed? Abstention. Two opposed. All right, so three, two. Motion carries? Okay. We hope, coming out of this, we will end up with a better process, but that's not happening tonight either. Thank you, Lauren, I do appreciate that discussion, and we'll see how this shakes out. All right, moving quickly along, it's now 9:22, and we are going to do our donations very quickly. Donation acceptance from the Allen Mudge Fund, I don't have the figure in front of me.
$4,910.
Thank you.
I want to thank Mrs. Amy Davis.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, thank you. Move to accept $4,910 from the Allen Fair Mudge Memorial Fund exclusively for the acquisition installation of a system technology hearing system in the auditorium, and yes, we do, we thank the Mudgees, we thank Amy for your role-
I'll pass it along.
As well.
Really make it happen.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second?
All right, has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All of us in favor? All right, thank you.
And just so the committee knows, we prophetically assumed you would accept that, so we actually sent a thank you letter to Dr. and Mrs. Mudge. Thank you.
Where's my rubber stamp? I'm feeling, yeah. Esert. You're selling out of money. Totally are, that's right. We have a really special, wonderful letter from Randy Herbie about the value of his experiences in China, and it's really wonderful. They did it, it's wonderful to hear, that it was a terrific experience, and I think it's a gift that keeps on giving, and I'm really pleased. Status of appropriations for FY14, the long patient needs take.
Oh no, that's fine. Really, it's not a great deal to talk about that's changed, other than, I'm going to get mine up for a minute.
So, Richard, you didn't want to do the other donation first?
I'm just doing it in the order we're getting here. Gridiron is high school report, we'll get there in a minute.
Before, you know, the revenues that have already been discussed.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you very much. Yeah, good.
So on healthcare, at this point, we're anticipating being over by $100,000, is that how?
No. The healthcare number that's on the status of appropriations versus my analysis that I do, I've already taken into, we budgeted $130,000 in additional, 100, in additional plan design changes. I'm saying we're going to be $137,000 because of all the additional plan changes over what we budgeted. So we're anticipating a $37,000 deficit.
$37,000, okay.
All right, anything else? Thank you very much. And now, the long patient, Mr. Smith? Anything from you? Please don't feel as if we have to say anything at all.
Just the donation, I wanted to ask the regional school committee to vote favorably to accept the donation from the Dover Sherborn Gridiron Club to competitive coaches who worked with our football team this season. At the request of the head coach, the Gridiron offers to donate $100,000 of fundraised money to be divided equally amongst a number of the coaching staff.
I would move that we gratefully accept that donation. Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? As always, we are deeply appreciative, thank you to the Gridiron Club, thank you, Mr. Smith for giving his word. All of us in favor? You have it.
Regional school community member Claire Graham had asked the question about donated funds, or funds coming to us from the cooperative girls' ice hockey team of Hopkinton. I emailed Dr. Kathy McLeod today, superintendent in Hopkinton, to find out the status of the funds for that, so we'll be able to report that back, and hopefully look for action around that next month.
Terrific.
In that, you're good.
Yes, thank you.
In the spirit of budgeting, there was some, there was a section here on Wi-Fi issues.
Yep.
So it was about 18 months ago, or two years ago, we made the decision to do Wi-Fi, we've encountered problems.
Yeah.
Is it all within budgets that were anticipated, or are we?
Absolutely, we're fixing it right now. In fact, interim director Anthony Rataco has contracted with a company, and they're literally doing daily testing, and doing the testing by period for volume, and, yes.
But the original costs that was anticipated to support that were still within a reasonable area?
It was still within our existing budget for fiscal 14, with no anticipated overages.
Okay.
In that area.
And now, regional special education report, the long patient, Mr. Smith?
Thank you. My intent is just to give you a brief awareness of some of the initiatives and assignments that I, as well as the department, have worked on in Q1. We happen to be part of a cohort called Number Four, and with that comes a variety of DESI responsibilities and reports. One of them is called an Indicator 14 report, which had to be done in September, and that is a federal requirement to collect post-secondary data on our students that have graduated, which requires us to contact all of our students and upload and enter that data into what their status is. And that was completed in September. In addition to that, we've also been involved in what's called a mid-cycle review, which happens in between your CPR, and that is comprised of a variety of activities, a couple days' worth of work, where we do self-assessments, student file records, reviews, state will come in, they do a review on our special education process, our IEPs, they review our IEPs, our actual assessments, and our transition planning. Another initiative, which has just showed up on my plate, is called Indicator 13, which is transition planning, post-secondary planning report, and that requires another self-assessment, and the state will be reviewing our IEPs to determine how effective our transition planning has been. We also had a circuit breaker audit report, which required an onsite DESI visit, staff audit, which resulted in the review of all of our documentations and claims that we had made with regards to our circuit breakers, which was submitted in July of 2015. In addition to that, we've got new positions, we have a special education team chairperson model that's working, we have a language-based strategies model in place, just want to highlight that a little bit, because we want to clarify that there is a significant difference between that new support model as opposed to current existing model. We do have an academic support model that's been in place in the learning center, and that primarily focuses, if you look at our student handbook, on really trying to teach the student independent learning skills, focusing on academic support content, working on executive- focusing on academic support content, um, working on executive functioning, organizational skills, et cetera, and that's all based upon a student profile. The language-based specialist does a variety of activities, but one of the more important ones is they, is a, what is called a language arts tutorial, which is a skill-based instruction model that's delivered either individually or in a small group, and focuses on the following areas, phonological awareness, fluency, spelling, reading comprehension, written expression, study skills, et cetera. These focus areas are essentially determined by each student's skill deficits, which are identified through a variety of evaluations, assessments, teacher-important observations. This language-based specialist also serves as a consultant to the region's teachers and teacher assistants regarding language-based strategies to be utilized in both general education classrooms as well as in the academic support set. And that is my brief overview.
Thank you very much, any questions?
Mrs. Graham had also asked if, if the number of, um, audits and indicators to which we are being required to respond this year is out of the ordinary or whatnot, and I indicated, not really, we, we're told which indicators will respond annually, what's compounded it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jerry, is that this year we're also in mid-cycle, so it's sort of this, sort of perfect storm of, um.
It all falls, it's all based on timing.
What does that mid-cycle thing mean?
So every six years, every public school district goes through a quarterly program review, a mid-cycle puts you at three years through that process, at which point the DESE will come in, the PQA team, the Program Quality Assurance Team, will come in and look at how much, how, look at the progress you're making towards the particular standards on which you were cited for areas that you made.
Okay, so, so it, 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 three years ago, when they came in and they didn't like the space or whatever, what have we done to change the space?
Correct, yep, that's exactly it, they want to see forward movement on those particular standards, if there are any. You know, we didn't have many at the region, we had two standards in Pine Hill and none in Dover, check around.
And when will they, when will they complete that report, and I assume it comes back to us?
Extremely delayed, so the CPR, surprise, surprise.
So as a, is an informative tool to school committee members, it's.
They're actually posted online, they're totally publicly available, so when it's posted, CPRs and mid-cycles are all.
So they're in the process of coming in and, and, and taking up our.
No, they've already, they've already come in. They've already gone through the process.
Yep.
And we've had our meetings, and they've looked at all our records, and it's all been uploaded in the system, now they're generating.
Is, and I, I don't want to belabor this, but is there any part of the, the hoops that you talked about, that you jumped through, that is more than just hoop jumping, I mean, that you find a valuable part of self-assessment? Or is it simply what you have to do to?
Well, there are some federal requirements that we are required to do. DESI has established, you know, certain protocol procedures, the self-assessment component, quite frankly, is, is a good opportunity, because I'm required, along with some staff members, to go through a variety of documents, match them up to a checklist, and it helps us identify areas of the issue, or professional development, so it's, it's a good process, every district goes through it, it just happens, this year we had four of them in the first quarter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie.
Now, the very long patient, Mr. Clark, Amy, you would like to bring to our attention?
I'm ready for my January report. I have two, Rachel is not here because she is at the dress rehearsal for Willy Monka, which will be Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights at 7:30, and, and by the auditorium, and Saturday will be a matinee, a big set in Warner. The other thing I would think we missed, because Mrs. Semino gathered some art behind you, seven-year art students learned about and use the style of surrealism in their recent artwork, and they have created surreal self-portraits based upon a significant event that happened in their lives, and those are the results.
I think that one down below is not.
I'm trying to figure out which one is most like my life.
She, she and the students very much like being able to display.
Thank you, and I love it, I think it's terrific, I love to, look forward to it. Thank you, anything else, any questions for Mr. Smith? I appreciate you sticking around, and thank you for that. Um, we will move.
No, I was giving them the signal.
Oh, yeah.
Go home, we're three-star school.
The audience gets smaller.
If you know the seniors will be here, so it'll be fun.
I see your privilege for this.
Thank you all, and thank you all for staying. We'll move on quickly, I hope, to the end of the business here, agenda items for the January meeting, uh, we will, I suppose we visit the budget. To be certain, if possible. Anything else?
Would you do a class size report?
We need to, we can do that in January, yeah, we were really flat out.
No, okay, okay.
Thank you.
Just bringing it up.
Thanks for the reminder, really.
So just meeting minutes, I think, right?
Meeting, yeah, no, we're going to get there in just a minute, um, oh, you mean for January?
Oh, are you, I thought you.
No, 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 it's other January items, and things will come up.
I think Claire had said that she expects to do the town reports, no, no, no.
Oh, yeah.
If we have the previous version, she can mark that up.
Yes, then we will talk about the town, town report, which she will, I think, be drafting in the interim, and we'll review it and approve it, probably will see it by email before that, from the comments and suggestions. Okay, more will come up. Seems like I should have a calendar that has something on it, but I can't remember what it was.
Yeah, there'll probably be other, other, other fall gifts.
Take you back.
Yes, okay. All right, uh, then, town reports, Dover town report, Sherburne town report, both of them due after our next meeting. Uh, Claire, as, as secretary, has stepped right up, and, um, did you do all this? Do you have the documents? I mean, I know it's, it must be floating around in the central office somewhere, last year's town.
Who wrote it last year?
Lauren.
You did, Lauren?
Yeah.
Do I have it, you mean like on my computer?
Yeah.
I think so. Okay.
Can you send it to Claire and CC me?
Sure.
Great, thank you, and then, and then.
I didn't understand what you were talking about, I have the town report in my house.
You didn't bring it? Uh, meeting minutes, we have the minutes of 11:05, 2013, to approve, uh, I move that we approve the minutes as submitted for the meeting of that day, 11:05, any other, any comments, changes, anything else for those minutes?
Looks like the, uh, the audience has lots to say.
They're really objecting to it, I thought that's not what happened.
Uh, all as a favor of approving said minutes.
Aye.
Okay, good, um, and we will note the Sherburne School Committee and Dover School Committee minutes, which didn't come in. Enrollment report is also in here, any questions, comments about the enrollment report before we beat a phone? Uh, we're going to take a moment, Shelley, a question?
I, I'm just very concerned about the, the budget moving forward, and so I would like us to say that we'd love to have a joint meeting and get started, because we're going to have to put some kind of timeframe on finding out about the IMA from Sherburne.
Do you think that a joint meeting with the?
With Sherburne, yeah, with the finance committees, but we, we'll have to give them an update, I mean, for them to put into a budget, we're going to have to know whether there's going to be an IMA or not.
So if it's okay with the committee, I typically check in every eight to 10 days with, it's sort of a placeholder in the calendar, so I will definitely be checking in this, next, end of next week with Mr. Caruso, to just find out, is it in fact on the December? I'd like to go to that board of selectmen meeting.
Yeah.
You too.
Look, and also it may be helpful from the finance committees to know when they need to know about the IMA, so, because if there's no end date for the Sherburne Selectment, it may continue.
Correct.
Continue for month to month.
Would it be okay then when I find out an update, if I can share that with Richard, and Richard wouldn't mind sharing with the committee?
So there may be some checking with the finance committees, too, to know when, when is the, the drop dead date of whether we have an IMA or not?
I got the sense from Dover, it would have been last year.
Yeah, we will, we will move on along.
I have not sensed any change.
What I thought you were asking though about was a joint meeting between this committee and the two finance committees, which I think really is important, would have, which unfortunately I think we're not going to have till the end of February.
That, that's okay, but I think, so you had said that the warrant had a placeholder one, I think if we could just let them know, yes, yes, we'd like a joint meeting, let's get one on the calendar.
Yeah, and I will, uh, make it my business.
I just saw that there was somebody that put something on a calendar, so that's what I'm saying, if it's already on warrants radar, maybe we should just go with that one.
Take you back on that.
Because it's the Thursday before February vacation, so it's either that week or it's 10 days, 12 days after that.
After that.
So if you want it in February, that's a good time to have it.
Right, exactly.
When is Sherburne's fiscal fiesta?
I don't know.
Oh, I have not my calendar. No, it was in February last year.
Oh, the, oh, I'm sorry, thinking of the, of the budget here, yeah, the budget.
Yeah, I'm trying to change the name.
Yes.
So you're referring to a Saturday?
Yes.
Yeah, that's usually much later, you're saying it was February?
It was in February, no, I.
It's, it's set, it's on my calendar.
I could have sworn.
We don't, we don't cert, Michael, we don't certify our budget until March.
Yeah, we never certify until March.
It has to be after that, because they, we don't, they don't have a budget they can trust until that.
I thought it was early March last year.
Probably is, but just.
All right, move to a journal, all as a favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you all very much, thank you.